Only we could kick off early.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I'd like to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Meridian Planning and Zoning Commission on September 20th, 2018. Let's begin with roll call.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Holland?
Here.
Commissioner Pearl?
Here.
Commissioner Cassinelli?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Here.
Assistant or Commissioners Jersley, Fitzgerald, and Carville.
Thank you very much. Next is the adoption of the agenda, the first item on the agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and we have one item, the findings of fact, conclusion of law for fire station number six, H-2018-0083 by Meridian Fire Department.
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, at this time, we're going to explain the public hearing process. We will open each item individually and then start with the staff report. The staff will report their findings regarding how the item adheres to our comprehensive plan and uniform development code with the staff's recommendations. After the staff has made their presentation, the applicant will come forward to present their case for approval, for the approval of their application, and respond to any staff comments. The applicant will have 15 minutes to do so. After the applicant has finished, we will open the public testimony. There is a sign-up sheet in the back as you entered for anyone wishing to testify. Any person testifying will come forward and be allowed three minutes. If they are speaking for a larger group, like a homeowners association, and there's a show of hands to represent that group, they will be given up to 10 minutes. After all testimony has been heard, the applicant will be given another 10 minutes to have the opportunity to come back and respond if they desire. After that, we will close the public hearing, and the commissioners will have the opportunity to discuss and hopefully be able to make a recommendation to city council approval or denial. Okay, let's begin with the staff report. Oh, we're continuing, that's right. Okay, we will open public hearing, the public hearing for, that was continued from September 6th for EEG Office Building, H-2010081, and we will open that for the purpose of continuing it until October 4th. Can I get a motion for continuance?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Wilson.
I move we continue H-2018-0081 to the date of October 4th, 2018.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to continue EEG Office Building, H-2018-0081 to the date of October 4th, 2018. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, now we will open the public hearing for Healthy Balance Pharmacy, H-2018-0086.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, as you said, this is an application for, called Healthy Balance Pharmacy. It's an application for a conditional use permit. See here at the zoning map, the property is zone CG. The site consists of approximately 7.772 of an acre of land, zone CG, located at 2424 East Gala Court. To the north is Overland Road and vacant commercial property, also zone CG. To the east is a drive-through coffee shop, zone CG. To the south is a multi-tenant office building, and, excuse me, zone CG. And to the west is also a multi-tenant office building, zoned LO. In 2006, the subject property was granted annexation and zoning with R-15 and CG zoning districts. Development agreement was approved with the annexation. Preliminary plot was approved concurrently with that annexation with 64 single-family detached residential lots, 24 alley-loaded attached single-family residential lots, nine multifamily residential lots, 25 common lots, and 32 commercial lots on approximately 77.66 acres. So a large development. Also back in 2006, the property received final plat approval for Gramercy Subdivision Number One, which consisted of 50 residential building lots, 32 building, commercial building lots, one city park lot, and 21 common lots on 62.01 acres. Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map designation is mixed-use regional. The applicant is proposing to construct a 4,364 square foot two-story pharmacy with associated drive-through. Per the recorded plat, direct lot access to Overland Road was not granted to this parcel. However, there is reciprocal cross-access in place for this parcel to access Gala Street to the south, Wells Avenue to the east, and use the right-in-only access from Overland Road. Staff's analysis of the proposed development includes the internal site and landscaping improvements, and the site circulation of the drive-through and adjacent properties. I failed to mention, the reason for the application for a conditional use permit is because it is within 300 feet of an existing drive-through, which is the coffee shop next door. The applicants, in the staff report, we required that the applicant provide us a cross-access agreement. They've since done that, so that requirement has been eliminated. We have that information. The UDC requires conditional use permit if the drive-through is within, as I said, 300 feet of an existing drive-through. There are some specific use standards set forth in UDC 11-4-3-11 for drive-through establishments that the applicant shall comply with. The applicant is showing several parking stalls that could be impacted by a drive-through lane. Parking stalls here on the east side of the project. I was requiring that those be labeled employee parking only in order to reduce the possibility of conflict in the drive-through lane. Staff has reviewed the submitted site plan and requires the necessary provisions prior to submission of a certificate of zoning compliance. We require that the applicant provide some landscaping, so you can see in the previous iteration of this plan, there was no landscaping in this location here, so that this was all kind of passed through parking stalls that made staff nervous as far as circulation through the parking lot and creating conflict, so we asked the applicant to provide some landscaping there, which they've done. Based on the overall square footage of the building, which I said is about 4,300 square feet, nine parking spaces are required. The applicant is providing 25 parking stalls, it meets that requirement. There is an existing 25-foot wide landscape buffer along Overland Road, which meets the requirement for a buffer along an arterial roadway, which constructed with the subdivision. Better landscape plan there. They're showing a pedestrian access out to the sidewalk along Overland Road for pedestrian connectivity. And these are the conceptual elevations provided by the applicant for the structure to meet design review standards. We will review that with a certificate of zoning compliance for the site improvements and administrative design review application for the structure prior to issuing a building permit. Did receive no written testimony. Staff is recommending approval of the project with conditions. Staff feels that the use fits well with the surrounding area and surrounding medical offices along this section of Overland Road, and again, are recommending approval.
Thank you. Do the commissioners have any questions for staff? Will the applicant please come forward? Please state your name and address for the record. Just one second.
The base.
The base.
The base of it. My name is Tyler Higgins. Okay, I didn't pass the first test, sorry. 315 East Elm Street, Caldwell, Idaho is our current pharmacy location business. I've been a pharmacist for 15 years, pharmacy owner for nine years in our current location. We fill about 300 prescriptions a day, and we are a hybrid-type pharmacy. In other words, we do traditional retail, community pharmacy, and also compounding pharmacies. So we create prescriptions from scratch, basically, so. But through different provisions, we've had a need to expand our filling abilities for compounding, so we needed to search for another location. And in searching through the valley, this seemed to be the best spot we could find. So this is the spot we have. There's a lot of medical offices and also residential area that could have a need. There are currently two other independent pharmacies located in Meridian, but those are north of the freeway, and so we'd be the first one in Meridian, south of the freeway. There's a couple other chain pharmacies that side. There's Rite Aid, and also there's a Walgreens on Overland, and also a Walmart, but they are more than a mile away, so it's a good spot. And we're just here to get the approval on the drive-through. We've created means so that there are two windows for ease of drop-off and pickup, and if a car wanted to, say, just drop off and go, and there was a car in front of them, there's an extra lane for them to pull out of the drive-through there, and so they can go ahead and circle around. Typically, our busiest times for pharmacy are going to be mid-morning and mid-afternoon is kind of when people are going to doctors, seeing them, and then going off to fill their prescriptions. And so coffee shops are typically busy more in the morning, people go into work, so we're planning on them not, the drive-through's not really overlapping a whole lot is our guess for the peak hours, so. Was there anything specifically I could answer, first questions that I haven't covered?
Commissioner, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Madam Chair. One quick question, are you in agreement with everything in the staff report as they've identified it with the employee parking near the top of that drive-through?
Yes, we did plan on putting employee parking on the side there where the drive-through is, on the, I guess, the east side of the building. And we did originally not put a, on the south end of the parking lot, a, I guess, an architectural landscape there. We were approached by the south owner of the building, who is now, we have also pictures that we brought. There's a lot of cars actually parking in our lot right now, and he did approach us saying that he didn't have enough parking in his spaces there. And so he asked if he could actually continue parking in this, which is another reason why we wanted to create as much parking as we could. So we thought for ease, it might be easier just to not have the architectural buffer there. So I'm not sure if that's still a possibility in this meeting, if we can get that approval or not, but we thought it might be easier for them to park there. We are at the end of a road, I guess you would say, between the two of us. His office building is more of, not a lot of traffic of customers coming in and out, he says, they're mostly employee parking. So there's not a lot of traffic on his side of the lot, the south side of the lot. But anyway, that's what we would like, if we could get that.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Cassinelli?
So are you saying that the parking that you're putting in, you're happy to offer that up to your neighbor to the south to park in your stalls?
Yeah, for a lease price, but yeah, we're happy to offer that as long as we have enough space for our patients.
So you feel then with what you have in the front of the building and then a couple on the side before it becomes employee parking, I guess, so not that extra parking to the south, but the, what's adjacent to the building is adequate for?
Yeah, and it could change over time. Typically pharmacies, when they first open, they're not very busy. It takes time to grow clientele, I guess you would say. Over time, we may need to use more of that, so, you know, I didn't promise him that we could, but I said at first we could look at trying to accommodate spaces for his employees.
Okay. Thank you.
And the main entrance is there in the southeast corner?
Main entrance, yes, southeast corner.
And to the building as well?
Yes, southeast corner, there's a door kind of on the corner, southeast corner.
Okay.
That's the entrance door, the main entrance door.
Okay.
And there's an employee door on the south side, more the southwest area.
Madam Chair, I have another question.
Commissioner Cassinelli?
Is there a curb or anything between what would be the drive-through lane where that employee parking is and then the coffee shop?
There is a buffer there, like a architectural buffer.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there, those two, that traffic can't get?
No.
It's separate?
They're separated.
Okay.
They are separated.
I think the idea of having the landscape buffer there on the south side is to just help prohibit folks from driving across that curb.
Right.
Just as a, you know?
Safety.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there definitely is a purpose for it beyond just looking nice.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
At this time, we'll take public testimony. Is anybody signed up?
Madam Chair, there is no one to sign up to testify.
Is there anyone here who would like to testify? No? Okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Cassinelli?
I move we close the public hearing for item H-2018-0086, Healthy Balance Pharmacy.
Second. We have, it has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Cassinelli?
There's a, I don't know how much traffic would stack up at a pharmacy, I've got the drive-through of the Walgreens near my house, and whenever I've gone through, I don't think it's ever been more than about three cars. I don't think that's going to be an issue. There's a separation, clear separation between, and that's what we're really looking at is the, is the drive-through within 300 feet of another one. I don't think it's an issue with the one next door. He's got way more parking than is required. I'm happy.
It meets your threshold. Madam Chair.
Commissioner Wilson?
As someone who lives in that part of town, I mean, I think this is a good fit for that area. I mean, I think the staff report said it, and I'm glad that these services are starting to migrate to south of the freeway, so I'm supportive of it.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Holland?
I tend to agree, and I understand the applicant's request to not have the landscape buffer, but I think it's nice to provide some extra safety between the two, so you don't just have cars kind of roaming through that curb area. I don't see any other concerns either.
Great. Yeah, I agree. I think this is a really nice use for that location, and I think it promotes pedestrian access to this too. There's a lot of apartment buildings on that south side. You know, there's people who work in offices all over there that can walk to this location on their lunch hour. It's a good location, I think, for this use, so. All right.
Madam Chair.
Madam.
Commissioner Holland?
After considering all staff applicant and public testimony, I move to approve file number H-2018-0086 as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of September 20th, 2018, with no modifications.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve application number H-2018-0086. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, let's move on to the next application, which is for the public hearing of Burlingame Subdivision, H-2018-0079.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, this is an application for rezone, for a preliminary plat, and for a development agreement modification. The site consists of approximately 18.994 acres of land, which is currently zoned R-4, located in the northeast corner of West Cherry Lane and North Black Cat Road. An aerial shot here of kind of what we're looking at, so this is the, this is the area kind of outlined by my mouse here. Back in, so again, site consists of 18, almost 19 acres. To the north is a single-family residential subdivision of Turnberry Crossing, which is zoned R-4. To the south, there's your single-family residential property zoned R-U-T in Ada County, as well as West Cherry Lane. The east are two church buildings, zoned LO, and a single-family residence and daycare zoned R-U-T within Ada County. And to the west are single-family residences zoned R-U-T also within Ada County. Back in 2017, a development agreement modification was approved that replaced the previously approved concept plan and allowed for up to 60 single-family residential lots. Concurrently, a preliminary plat was approved that allowed, again, for up to 60 single-family lots. Specifically, R-4 is what was designated at that time. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation for this property is low-density residential. So this is the previous plat that was approved back in 2017. And again, on the right-hand side here is just kind of a blow-up version, because it's kind of hard to see what's going on with all the line work here, so. Not terribly different as far as layout's concerned. Some changes that were made to improve the project. So I guess to start out with, the applicant has applied to rezone the property from R-4 to R-8. The rezone is desired by the applicant to align with his vision to market the property to retirees and empty nesters. The applicant believes that with the rezoned R-8 and the reduced dimensional standards, the project will now be much easier to market to their target demographic. The R-8 zoning district is an allowable zoning designation within the LDR, or Low Density Residential Comprehensive Plan designation, and the proposed density is appropriate if a step up is approved by council, and that's something that they can ask for, to go one step in density, and then that's what they've asked for. Next, a development agreement modification, as I said, this property was, is currently governed by a development agreement that was approved with the Burlingame Subdivision back in 2017. Again, because the applicant's vision for the property does not match what was approved and required with the previous development, the applicant has applied to modify the existing development agreement to update the development plan and building elevations. The previously approved plan included 60 single-family residential lots and seven common lots with an R-4 designation, which had a density of 4.43 dwelling units per acre and about 1.89 acres of open space. The previous iteration did not require a step up in density per the comprehensive plan because the density was in line with the requirements of the low-density residential designation. The new plan consists of 74 residential lots and 14 common lots, and has 2.26 acres of open space, and has a density of 4.98 dwelling units per acre, which requires the step up in density. The new development agreement should include the proposed development plan, and any changes required in building elevation included as attached exhibits. So as a way of explanation, this entire parcel with the inclusion of this area indicated by my mouse here was included in the development agreement, but this parcel was not included in the plat. So there are some requirements on that plat from the development agreement that are, it's a little bit funky, so just kind of explain that a little bit here. They did a property boundary adjustment to exclude that parcel from the plat, but because it was in the development agreement, there are some specific requirements for that parcel that we would like to keep in the development agreement. So as I said, the home was split and was still part of the recorded development agreement. Staff has reviewed the recorded development agreement and finds that even though it's not part of the plat as required in the recorded development agreement, that the home should be required to hook up to city services immediately, close the existing access to Cherry Lane, extend a 10-foot multi-use pathway along the frontage, provide a 25-foot landscape buffer in accord with the UDC, and take from the proposed West Montgomery Way and shall abandon direct access to Cherry Lane prior to the city's signature on the first final plat. So next, a preliminary plat is proposed, is again consisting of 74 building lots, 14 common lots, and about 18.9 acres of land, and what they're asking for is an R-8 zoning district. Develop in three phases, and it's a little difficult to see here, but phase one would be approximately, the north boundary would be where my mouse is, and wrap down to Cherry Lane. Second phase would start where my mouse is and kind of follow this line here, so second phase would connect with Turnberry Crossing, and then third phase is this area indicated by my mouse. You can kind of see the dashed line there. The average lot size in the development is 7,152 square feet. The minimum of 5,600 square feet, which meets UDC standards. Lots in the proposed subdivision are required to comply with the dimensional standards in the R-8 zoning district, and as well as the block length standards, which they do. Subject property is currently developed with two existing residences. Both of the homes have an access from a 25-foot wide private access easement to Black Cat Road, which is currently indicated by my mouse here. There's an easement between both of the church properties out to Black Cat, which will be eliminated as an access point, since the one home that will be remaining in this location will be accessed internally and the other home will be removed. For the development, the applicant's proposing to construct a new public street access to Cherry Lane and extend O'Connor Avenue into the site from the north. Two stub streets are proposed, one along the west boundary. So stub street approximately in this location to the west, and a stub street in this location to the east. Staff is generally supportive of the proposed street system. ACHD has submitted comments and conditions back to the city for this project, and they have not required any significant changes to the plat. Street buffer landscape, which is required to be provided, as set forth in the UDC, the applicant is proposing a 25-foot landscape buffer, and as I said, even though this parcel is not part of the plat, a 25-foot landscape buffer was required with the previous development agreement, and we are going to require that that stay that way, and it'll be landscaped according to the UDC. A pathways master plan depicts a regional pathway on the site along the north side of Cherry Lane, and another section of the 10-foot regional pathway along the north side of the property adjacent to the Sellers Canal. So I'm going to go to the landscape plan here. You can kind of see, so there's a 10-foot multi-use path. plan here. You can kind of see, so there's a 10-foot multi-use pathway that will be required along Cherry Lane. There's also a, a pathway that's required along the south side of the Sellers Canal. So, it will be in a, in an easement, wrapped behind the lots on the west side of the LDS Church. And eventually, our, our plan is to have that go along the easement out to Black Cat. But those, that would be something that we can't require right now, because neither church is part of the application. So, the thought is eventually when those, one or the other come in for some improvements on their site, we'll require a multi-use pathway at that time, eventually connected out to Black Cat. And because this, this is an access road for the irrigation district, the Sellers Irrigation District, they've, the irrigation district has allowed the applicant to pave that instead of having it be dirt or, or gravel, so it can, it be a dual-purpose, multi-use pathway and an access road to access their irrigation facilities. The applicant's also proposing to construct several micropaths within the development as part of the internal pathway system. The proposed micropath must be five feet in width and landscaped in accord with the UDC. As I said, there are existing irrigation easements along the north and a portion of the east boundary of the project. During the project review meeting with the other city departments, concerns were raised that this area could be unsafe due to the lack of visibility. And discussing this with the applicant, it was determined that the Sellers Irrigation District, as I said, needs this area to remain open, so they have access to their facility. The applicant's proposing two common driveways, Lot 20 Block 5 and Lot 13 Block 3. All common driveways should comply with the standards set forth in the UDC. Detached sidewalks shall be constructed along the entire frontage of West Cherry Lane. That received one, one comment from Jeanette O'Brien with concerns about overcrowded schools and congested roads. These are some of the landscape plan. These are conceptual building elevations for this subdivision. These are the, I believe, the exact same elevations that were proposed with the previous project. Just to comparison quickly, on the landscaping and open space with the previous project, 1.89 acres or 10% of the project was proposed with one amenity. And this project is proposing 2.26 or 11.9% open space. And they've, are proposing two sections of multi-use pathway, but they're also proposing a play structure, a gazebo, and some internal pathways. Staff is recommending approval. The project is comparable to the subdivision to the north, though obviously the lot sizes aren't, aren't quite as big as, as the subdivision to the north. But staff feels that with the increased open space, better design and layout of the subdivision, and better amenities, that it would be a better fit than the previous project. So we're recommending approval. Stand for any questions?
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Holland.
Josh, just one clarification question. On access points into this neighborhood, they're gonna take away the, the private drive on Cherry Lane, but that, the Cherry Lane is going to be the major access point for the neighborhood? Is that correct?
Correct. So, the main, the main access point in, with the first phase will be off of Cherry Lane. And as I said, there's an existing home here, and they, I believe the applicant has an exhibit showing how they're going to, you can kind of see where my mouse is here, where an access easement is for that parcel. So they, they won't have access to Cherry Lane.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Castanelli.
Josh, what, out of curiosity, what happened with the previous project that we approved last year?
You can ask the applicant.
Okay. Is it the same applicant?
Same property owner.
Okay. And then also, a couple other questions on the pathway system. The access right now off of Black Cat between the, I think, does that go between the two churches?
It's essentially on the property line, correct.
Okay. And is it, so is one or both of the churches, they, that's their property?
Yeah, the easement crosses both, both of their, both of their.
So access to a future pathway and stuff, that's going to come?
We, we can't require that currently. But as I said, when, when either or both of those properties come in to redevelop at some point, we'll, we'll get that pathway.
Okay.
You can still use it. It's still, the easement is still in place. Folks can walk on that if they want to.
So it, it, the easement is there for public access? Okay. I remember, I remember this last time, and I remember the pathways were, that, that we talked a lot about that. And then on the access for Settlers Irrigation along the east boundary, yeah, is that, that is, that is, that is their drive end pathway? Is that a combination of both?
Correct. So you can ask the applicant. We've discussed that a little bit. So the irrigation district has allowed them to pave a wider, a wider pathway. I can't remember, 14 feet maybe that they need in order to get their vehicle back there. But we also require that there be landscaping on either side. So they'll, they'll have to, it'll have to be a little bit wider than what we typically get, which is just 20 feet.
Okay.
10 foot with 5 feet on either side of landscaping.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Hey, the applicant come forward? It's always so tall. Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the commission. I'm Becky McKay with Engineering Solutions, business address 1029 North Rosario and Meridian. Glad to be here tonight. I'm representing Yuri Mukha, who's the applicant on this particular project. As, Josh, how come this not, oh, there it goes. As Josh indicated, this particular property is just located west of Black Cat, north of Cherry Lane. As you can see, Turnberry Subdivision, which is zoned R4, is to the north. To the east, we have the LDS Church and the Seventh Day Adventist Church, which are zoned LO. We have some RUT parcels to the south of us, to the west of us, and then kind of kitty-corner to us, we do have an R8 designation. This kind of gives you an aerial photo of the property. It's basically a consolidation of multiple parcels. That's why you have three homes on the property. There was an existing home right here at Cherry Lane with the garage oriented to the south, an existing house right here in the midsection, and then another one over on the east side. And these homes took access off of a cross-access easement that went out to Black Cat Road in between the two church properties. Little bit of history on these properties. This property's kind of been hanging around for 12 years. It first came through the city, is Incline Village, as Josh indicated, back in 2006. That's when the property was annexed and zoned R4. It was approved for a preliminary plat. Construction plans were prepared. Final plat was prepared, submitted to the city. They obtained all their necessary approvals, but obviously then the recession hit and the property was not developed. So it kind of languished over time. Yuri picked the property up. He went ahead, as Josh stated, did a one-time split for this existing home right here on Cherry Lane, and then he brought this project through in 2017. They came before you in the city council with an R4 designation that was already previously approved and had 60 lots. There were some issues that they struggled with, pathways, providing adequate easement for the Settlers Irrigation District. Some of the key issues that were mentioned in the staff report was the amount of open space that was provided. The council or the commission was, was not very pleased with the amount of open space. They, they, their concern was that the open space and the amenities were not distributed evenly throughout the subdivision. So, it was approved, and shortly after it was approved, Yuri came to me and he said, you know, I have this approved development. I've got a development agreement modification they want me to sign, but I, I really don't think that this is the best use on the property and the best layout. And I've talked to builders and, and basically they're telling me that, you know, they, they think that something better could be designed on this property. So he went ahead, signed that development agreement modification on my recommendation. And then we started looking at the project and looking at this particular layout and trying to figure out, you know, based on the concerns the commission had, even though it was approved, the concerns staff had, the concerns the neighbors had, what can we do to change it? So, in, in looking at this project, my recommendation was that they just, they just retain one home on the property here, because this is obviously the nicest home. Eliminate the, the home on the easterly side, which then allowed us to bring that street through. The, the project with just the cul-de-sacs wasn't really neighborhood-friendly. They'd only allocated 30 feet for the, there's two laterals here, the Safford lateral, which is Nampa Meridian, and then the Settlers Southern Canal, which is under Settlers Irrigation District. And they'd only allocated 30 feet. In my conversations with settlers, MAC indicated that they needed about 45. They also, the Safford is, or not the Safford, I'm sorry, the Settlers is piped through, along the east side here, and they had easements into the lots. Well, I, I really do not like having irrigation district easements in private lots. It just, you're just asking for conflict between the future homeowners and the irrigation district. So my recommendation to Yuri was, you know, we create separate lots. This is a separate 30-foot wide lot here. This is a separate 45-foot wide lot here. None of the buildable lots are encumbered by the irrigation easements. In talking with MAC, I said, you know, they want a multi-use pathway to come up and then go westward for future extension. And I said, you know, would you object to that? He indicated to me, no, you know, we'd work with you. So typically what happens, instead of us doing just the 10-foot wide multi-use pathway, we do a 14-foot wide more, multi-use pathway. And it basically serves for a dual purpose. It's a maintenance road, and it is traffic-rated so that the irrigation district ditch riders can drive on it. There are some existing trees all along that pipeline, and then, as you can see, all along here, the irrigation district indicated, we know that there's trees there. We're not going to let you plant any more trees. We will allow you to do turf and shrubs in your pathway with a license agreement, but we won't allow any trees to encroach within our easement. And so when we took, took a look at this, we got rid of those, those dead-end cul-de-sacs, and we created kind of a looped street. And one of the things that was contentious is they had a pond back here, and the residents of Turnberry were very concerned about, obviously, mosquitoes, the aesthetics of the pond. So my recommendation was, we need to have an irrigation pond to store the 24-hour water right. This is served by, I believe it's the McKinney lateral that comes through, and, and there's a head gate right here, and then there's a ditch that kind of traverses the property and goes and provides water to the south, along the south side. So, my recommendation was, we put a line pond here, and we store the 24-hour water right so that we can meet our peak demand. Obviously, that'd also be aesthetically pleasing at the entrance. As far as our amenity, that we create a nice tot lot here, where we could put playground equipment, a gazebo, and then we have a 5-foot micropath that kind of comes down here, that connects everything together. This particular lot here is a common lot that's primarily designed for storm drainage. And when we started working on this, we basically ended up with approximately 74 lots. In talking with staff, they said, you know, we're open to the fact that you want to step up from R4 to R8, but obviously, we want to see, one, a superior concept, two, more amenities, three, a better distribution of your open space. So, so those were our goals. And that's, that's pretty much what Yuri and I worked with throughout the last few months. Yuri's kind of thinking that, you know, this is going to kind of appeal to, you know, the more, you know, empty nester-type people, seniors. But what we found in some of our other communities, they want playgrounds because their grandkids come and visit. So they like, you know, like gazebos, they like pathways, but they still want playgrounds, which, which I found that, you know, I guess I never thought of it from that perspective. But I've had that comment made multiple times. What's before you now, these lots range in size from 5,600 square feet all the way up to this particular lot here with the existing home. Detached garage is 34,000 square feet. But really, the important thing is these average lot sizes are 7,152 square feet. So we're, we're trying to provide a variety of, you know, they're 55 by 102 feet in depth and 55 by 150 feet in depth. So, a little bit of variety. The density that we're proposing, our net density is 3.9 acres, or dwelling units per acre. What was previously approved was 3.16. When we had our neighborhood meeting, we did get turnout from the Turnberry residents. Obviously, we'll be connecting to their stub street here. There is a bridge that will have to be constructed. There's a trust fund at ACHD for 50% of this vehicular bridge structure, but that was done in the 90s. And so obviously, costs have escalated over the last, how many jillion years it seems like? So, you know, that was one thing that we had to take into consideration, is the economic viability of this development. And the 60 lots, you know, in looking at the costs for construction, it just was not going to be able to, you know, make economic sense. And that's kind of the feedback that Yuri received from other builders and developers that he consulted. Our total eligible open space, as Josh indicated, went up. We have 2.26 acres of open space. It went up basically a half acre. The initial open space was 1.89, roughly 10%. We're pushing 11.9, almost 12% open space. So we did increase that, and I think that's important. Obviously, if you're increasing the number of units and the density, that your open space and your amenities go up. On the, the irrigation, I did, was contacted by Mr. Clower, who lives to the south. And I wanted, I told him that I would go on the record, that we would make sure that the irrigation water that he is entitled to and is assessed for will be piped to him, because he has not been receiving his water, just due to the property, you know, overgrown ditches and so forth. So we will work closely with him to make sure that that's rectified. As far as the utilities are concerned, the sewer is located right here, right between the two churches. We will extend that off-site sewer. The Public Works Department has indicated that capacity exists to service these 74 lots. One of their primary concerns was the sewer depth, because in the initial plan with the cul-de-sacs, the sewer was basically coming out of the ground right about in here. Where we eliminated that existing home, looped this street through, then that allowed us to, we have adequate cover clear down to here, and we will connect this existing home right here to central sewer, central water. And then we will stub the sewer to this parcel here. As far as this cul, or the stub streets are concerned, I did consult with this property owner. I initially had the stub street located further north. He asked that we move it south, which I did. I guess they're looking at the possibility of constructing a Montessori school on the property. Fire department made a comment about this common drive. As far as the length, cannot exceed 150 feet without a, without a turnaround. Basically, the common drive will terminate at this lot right here. The only reason I show it coming down is because this is a sewer line that will sewer this property back into this project. We'll extend an 8-inch water line from Turnberry and then make a connection to the existing 12-inch water main that's in Cherry Lane. So therefore, we will loop that water system. water system, um, and meet all fire flow requirements. As far as this pocket park, um, we have, um, we have fourteen thousand two-hundred-and-eleven square feet, um, and that is, that is kind of our active use, uh, pocket park here. To give you kind of a size of what this is, this is about twenty-six thousand square feet. This is going to be passive. Um, one of the comments in the previous, uh, commission hearing was, they didn't want to see kids playing right, you know, at the entrance along this arterial and this collector roadway entrance, and so, obviously, we've moved all of the active amenities internally within the development. So this is just basically passive. Um, just to, you know, curb appeal, we have an island, we have landscaping along the east side, and then we have landscaping along the existing home. Um, so I kind of went through, you know, the gazebo, the playground, um, we're tain, we're tanning as many of those existing spruce trees as we can. Um, they're obviously a benefit to our project. I'll wrap up. I just don't want to go. Lastly, this is the existing home. Uh, the staff is asking us to provide, in the development agreement, a twenty-five-foot landscape buffer, which we can provide that. Um, ACHD is allowing us to put your ten-foot multi-use pathway within the right-of-way. We just want the commission to be cognizant of the fact that the driveway does have to encroach into that twenty-five feet, because that existing garage is oriented to the south. Um, we're creating a access internally, uh, within our, at our, um, collector roadway for access to the home, and eliminating their direct lot access to, uh, Cherry Lane. Uh, do you have any questions that I could answer? Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Madam Chair, I do have a question for you.
Mr. McEwen.
That, the, uh, I had it, and I, I lost it, and I got it back. The pond, since that's, that's the irrigation storage essentially, that's going to go, is that going to go dry in the winter?
Um, the groundwater out here is, we're, we've been monitoring it, and so there is some high groundwater, because this is the low point. Um, so, we haven't decided, we usually do when we go into design, whether that's going to be a wet pond and get into that groundwater, or whether we line them. Um, if we get into the groundwater, typically, it enlarges the pond, we have to have that safety shelf. Um, and so, it's all going to depend on if we have enough room to do that, or whether we just line it. If it's lined, then yes, in the winter, it would go dry. Um, in the irrigation season, it would be full, it'd be, um, basically, they have a, you know, a float on them so that it's allowing that water to go in. Uh, we have to aerate that pond, um, so we usually have a subsurface aerator, and maybe a surface aerator, um, that kind of has like a little fountain, so that it does serve as an amenity during those irrigation months. But you're correct, in the winter, if it's lined, um, it is a dry pond.
Thank you.
Becky, can you show us on the landscape plan where the entrance is to the house there in the southeast corner? Is that going to come right in on the west side of the?
It's right there.
So, it, when they're, when they're making a left, are they gonna, is that going to be a, an issue for them with this center island?
No. As you can see, the island terminates right here at the little pink tree.
There won't be a visual issue if there's trees in that island?
No. No, because we have to, we have to keep that so, uh, that vision triangle, so they can safely pull out and then exit the subdivision.
Okay. There's no more questions for the applicant? We'll now take testimony. Do we have anyone signed up?
Madam Chair, uh, we have one person sign up that would like to testify, and William
Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's William McEwen. I'm at fifty-one-twenty West Cherry Lane, which is this property right here. Okay? So, you can imagine that this project greatly affects my property, and so, I do have concerns. I'd like to thank Becky, she's been, um, very instrumental in, in working with me as far as, uh, our needs in this project, and, uh, and she's been great to work with. Uh, I do have some concerns, however. So, since you know where I live, um, one of the issues is that the sewer that comes through here, she already mentioned that because they were able to reroute it, they could actually get it to the front of their development. When I say front, I mean the south, the south end right here. The problem is, is that the sewer line would be approximately three feet deep, and if our property were to hook into that, we may be looking at a grinder pump to even hook up the city water, or to city sewer. And we're really not that anxious to hook into city sewer anyway. We just don't want to get in a position where we have to and have to buy a grinder pump to do that, for future development of our property. Unless we can hook into the sewer back here, can you guys see my mouse right here, where she is running the sewer line? Okay? That was, that was one of our concerns. Um, we've gone through a nine-month study with the CDHC with groundwater out there. Currently, it hasn't gotten above six feet, so there isn't a problem with us, uh, developing our own sewer system. Uh, secondly, ADHD has already talked to us about vacating our driveway, as you know they do. And we would be in the same boat as the house next door to us on this project, and, uh, since Becky's moved this, uh, moved this in here, as long as we have access to that, we're in good shape. Um, the fourth point I'd like to make is that Cherry Lane, even, as you can see, is not developed past the intersection, and there's no ma, uh, it's not on the master plan for AC, ADH, uh, ADHD to develop that, other than a circle on the corner. And so, they're talking about putting retirees, um, retirement people for retirement housing in there, which you guys know requires a lot less traffic in the subdivisions. I think that's great, but if you're going to approve the plan, and that's what they want to do, make sure it's part of the requirements of the neighborhood, is the concern that I have. And, uh, the last, the last comment that I have is that I know that there's irrigation pipes buried on the backside of my property, which is the south side of this property, and they start right about here, and they go all the way across, and I just want to make sure that everybody knows that there's an easement for that, so that I don't lose my irrigation. Other than that, I don't have a problem with this project, and Becky's been wonderful to work with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Has no one else signed up to testify? Would anybody else like to come forward and testify?
Um, my name is Carrie Donahue. I live up in, um, off Tournament Drive in Turnberry Crossing, so the north parcel there. Um, I live-
Please, please state your address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, four-nine-nine-nine West Tournament Drive, Meridian.
Thank you.
Um, my concern, um, first and foremost with a lot of my neighbors is the safety due to traffic, um, with the influx, um, of traffic coming from this particular layout versus the last one with only sixty, um, designated parcels. Unfortunately, a lot of the commerce near our area is more toward the northeast, um, the new developing parts of like Chindon and State Street. Um, there's not a lot of shopping, um, other than an Albertson's that is on Cherry Lane until you get clear into Meridian or closer to Eagle Road. So, we feel that there is going to be a, a large influx of actual traffic that will come into, um, Turnberry Crossing through the connection at O'Connor, um, right here, and use our entrance and exit to Black Cat, since there is not going to be any si, any sort of, um, main road accessed with this to Black Cat Road. So, with that, um, the initial concerns, children, we have a lot of small children, families with small children. Um, our entrance becomes congested in the morning, especially due to, um, bus stops, school kids, um, um, with flow of, um, cars in and out. So, when Becky mentioned the developers' meeting, um, some of these concerns were dra, or brought up, I won't say they were addressed, um, but essentially, the reply that we got, um, when asking about what are, what is ACHD going to do to maintain or help, whether it's stop signs or potential stoplights, to help that flow of traffic through our subdivision? Um, the response that I got was, i, it, it won't be an issue because there won't be that much extra traffic. So, um, we weren't comfortable with that answer by any means. Um, nothing has been proposed to alleviate that concern. Um, I know that, uh, Becky has mentioned that they are planning to promote this as a retirement community of sorts. Um, but un, unless that's an actual agreement, that that is what it has to be, like a fifty-five and over community, uh, there's, there's no indication that we are not going to have some sort of major traffic issue, um, especially when, um, properties to the west are developed and also connect in two places in Turnberry Crossing. Um, that future planning is also going to create, um, a mass amount of, um, influx of traffic through, to use our connection to Black Cat Road. And so, um, thank you for your time, just wanted to, um, state that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Is there anyone else here to testify? Becky, would you like to come back forward?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the commission, Becky McKay. Um, appreciate, uh, Mr. McEwen's comments. Um, I try to make an effort to work with the, with the adjoining property owners and, and obviously try to mitigate what our impact is. Um, as far as, oops, as far as the sewer is concerned, Josh, can I get back to the So, as far as the sewer is concerned, um, uh, Mr. McEwen is correct, when the sewer gets down to this location, it has the minimum of three foot of cover. So, as far as searing of his property, the City of Meridian Public Works has, has required that we extend the sewer line to here, to bring that sewer, because we have more depth here than we do at this location. We'll stub water here, we'll stub water here, but the sewer will be stubbed at this location for him. He could do a grinder pump if he were to redevelop his property, or he wanted to connect his home. Um, I did have a conversation with the city engineer, um, and talked to Warren about the existing house here. If we could not get a service line over, could we do a grinder pump and then pressure into the line? And he had indicated, yes, we could, but with our redesign, we do not need to do that, uh, based on our initial, um, sewer inverts. As far as Mr. McEwen, you know, on the irrigation, um, we coordinate with the adjoining property owners. Um, like I ind, like I told you, I'm, you know, I've had conversations, multiple conversations with the property owner to the south. Um, we'll protect any existing irrigation facilities. Um, I indicated that this is served by the, um, McKinney, it's the Stewart lateral, um, that serves everybody out here, and that head gate is here. So, I work with Settlers Irrigation District, Mac Myers, making sure that we're protecting, we're piping, um, all of the irrigation and drainage water, um, for the adjoining properties, and obviously enhancing, um, the irrigation system that we have out here now for this development. Ms. Donahue, she did attend my neighborhood meeting at my office. Um, her primary concern was obviously traffic, and the, the fact that, you know, our primary access is to Cherry Lane. Um, you know, like I said, we're targeting this as fifty-five and older, but, you know, you can't limit who can live here. Um, we can market it for fifty-five and older, but, but we may get some empty nesters, we may get, you know, a single mom with a, with a child, who knows? Um, we have to connect to this stub street. Um, that is required by ACHD. If someone were to, up in this northern section, you are going to get some interconnectivity with the traffic. They may come up and then go out to Black Cat through Turnberry, but likewise, you know, we may get some people that drop through us and come out to Cherry Lane. It's kind of, you know, a little bit of give and take. The interconnectivity is important. Um, it's in the policy manual at ACHD, it's in your comprehensive plan, your ordinance, so we really don't have any choice but to make that connection. Um, if this were a straight connection, and this really promoted cut-through traffic, I would be far more concerned. Um, but with, um, with the design we have, we're, we're obviously making the most convenient route for our residents to come down to Cherry Lane, the arterial here. And we will be widening Cherry Lane. Uh, ACHD is requiring that we dedicate forty-eight feet of right-of-way for the existing home that's not part of the plat, and for the plat. Uh, there's no compensation for that. We will be widening it seventeen feet from center line, and then installing a ten-foot, uh, sidewalk along the entire frontage, including the out parcel. Um, so we will be doing what we can to mitigate for our impact on the transportation system, and in addition, all of the impact fees that will be, um, paid to ACHD to help, um, obviously with future upgrades in this area for the existing traffic that we're creating. Um, we're creating about six-hundred-and-ninety-nine vehicle trips per day. Uh, the additional fourteen lots that we're proposing is about a hundred-and-thirty-three additional trips, or approximately a nineteen percent increase. So, it's, it's pretty minimal. Capacity does exist, ACHD indicated, everything is operating at a better, uh, uh, level of service better than E, and that there is capacity on the network, and they have recommended approval. Thank you.
Madam Chair. Uh-
Commissioner Holland. Becky, just one more question. So, on the north side of the property, where you've got to construct the bridge over to the other neighborhood up there?
Yes.
Is there a slight incline, and that's, that's going to naturally slow traffic as they go over that bridge, or is it going to be a flat bridge over?
Um, that's going to depend. What we have to provide is two feet of freeboard, um, over each waterway. Um, so, sometimes we'll go with, um, with a pipe, um, or sometimes we'll go ahead and do a concrete box structure. So, where we're crossing two facilities under two dif, different jurisdictions, um, I don't want to speculate. Um, typically, there is a little bit of a rise because of that two feet of freeboard, and then we have to match in right here. Um, I, I can't really come in steep because I can't, uh, send drainage their way, I have to take the drainage back, uh, south, uh, onto our site. But, but typically, you know, we, it will be, usually the bridges are kind of a traffic calming measure. Um, you know, there's, there's walk, there's sidewalk railing, um, you know, you can decorate them, make them, um, you know, aesthetically pleasing. Um, so, I, yeah, I don't see the people just whipping through there, no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, can I get a motion to close the public hearing? For item number H-two-zero-one-eight-zero-zero-seven-nine?
So moved.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Castanelli.
I guess I'll, I'll start. I remember, I remember the, the first time I went through it, and I don't remember everything. I do remember we spent a lot of time. I remember there was a lot going on with the pathways and whatnot. Uh, what struck my, when I first looked at this, what, what kind of hit me, Josh, do you have the future land use map you can pull up real quick?
Real quick, but I can find it.
Not real quick, okay. If you're, what, what- Okay, if you're, what struck me is, I'll look at it here and kind of talk to it. When you look north of the freeway with the future land use map, there's a overwhelming majority in this area that is, that's R4, or, excuse me, R8, that's medium density, very little, very little low-density. So, I mean, it was, we went through this, we approved it as R4. I want to protect the low-density that's in this area. Again, it's pretty limited, real heavy, medium-density, and there's a lot of places to do the R8 in this area of Meridian, and there's not much of the R4 left. I don't want to, we approved it as R4, we approved the project. I don't like to see that increase. I don't think there's any guarantee of keeping it to R55 unless you, you know, unless you design the houses as such, but that what we saw here is the same houses going on, smaller lots, increasing the density. I mean, yes, I like, you know, more amenities, slightly more open space, it's not a whole lot, I'm talking a half an acre, but what really hits me is the, is, there's very little, very little low-density R4 in that area, most of it's R8. I don't want to see what little we have go to R8. That's really where I stand on this, and we approved it as R4. It was going to work last year, and, you know, why it doesn't work now, I don't know, but it was going to work then.
Any other thoughts, comments?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Holland.
I, you know, I agree that it's tough when there's not a lot of R4 possibilities left in the community as far as how we can develop some of it. At the same time, I think the applicant did a pretty decent job of trying to make sure we still had an increase in open space, some better pathways, going through it, trying to work with the neighbors and putting together a good project. I don't see a lot of concerns in the way that this is laid out, except for the increase in density, because I agree with you, it's tough when there's not a lot of R4 still available. When you look at what's kind of around it and what's developing and what's selling really quickly in the market, there's a market for the R8 too. So, I guess I'm kind of torn between both. I don't see any challenges with this development, the way that it's laid out. I think they did a nice job developing the streetscape, putting in some open space, putting in some nice features and increasing some of those amenities. Yeah, those are my thoughts for now.
I guess, can I answer that a little bit, my opinion? The development is fine in somewhere where it's already zoned R8. They're looking for, they're looking for the step-up, for the change in zoning, and again, I just see, when you look at that, there's so little R4 in that area, and there's plenty of R8, there's plenty of other places to put this development, and we went through it and approved it at the R4. I want to see us keep what R4 is out there. There's just, there's not much when you look at that area of Meridian, and, you know, I would just, I'd hate to lose it. There was a, you know, there's other R4s that have gone in, and we just dealt with one, it went through council this week, I don't know what, I don't know what the outcome of that was, I didn't see, but that was an R4 in the middle of R8. So, it will work. You know, they had a builder team to put together an R4 project, it worked out there. I think they can make it work here. And I, I just don't want to see us lose what little R4 we have.
Okay, so I wanted to speak to, I think she might have left, but I wanted to speak to the neighbor in Turnberry Crossing, an application that recently came before us, only had one main access, and we had a member of the fire department and the police department here chatting with us about safety and safety with public services, and so when you don't, when you only have one access, especially that doesn't have a light and you have a traffic jam there or an accident there, then there aren't other options for emergency vehicles to come into the development. So, that's another reason why they need that connectivity to the north, so I just wanted to, to, no, it's, I'm sorry, it's a closed hearing, so we can't take any more testimony. When I first looked at this application, I was thinking along the lines of Commissioner Castanelli was concerned about that increase in density. I still have that concern, but I do think that it is laid out as well as it could be laid out for this shape of the lot that's there. I think that the applicant has thought through as much as they can think through in regard to what the staff has asked of them and what the neighbors have asked of them. So, this is a tough one, because I can definitely see concerns on both sides. So, there's nothing else to discuss regarding the specifics?
More opinion down there.
Mr. Wilson?
I appreciate everybody kind of weighing in, I was kind of curious, particularly your stance was kind of a little, I mean, I think it's really well-thought-out. I think, obviously, the applicant was very thoughtful in their presentation. I think the open space, it's kind of interesting you say it's only half an acre, and it's a 15 or 20% increase, that's fairly significant in my book. So, I mean, I think it's really well-developed, there's that connectivity. I look at, again, the comprehensive plan is, I mean, it's a guide, you know, I mean, it's theory kind of running into kind of the reality of the way things are going to develop, and so before us, we have a pretty gosh darn good proposal that I think checks a lot of boxes, that isn't, deviates, doesn't deviate too far from what we approved in 2017, and I do remember you, Bill, asking a lot of questions about interconnectivity and, you know, open space, and I think what we have here is, it's a compromise piece, but overall, I like it, I think it's good.
We had a lot of conversation about that pond up in that northwest corner, and in the end, I don't think anybody was very comfortable with that location, so to see that moved down in the front, I think is a really good compromise.
I mean, I feel like we're kind of, and no offense, we're not of nitpicking when we have something that's a lot better than what came in 2017, but now it's like, well, it's not R4. Well, it's like, okay, I can see where you're coming from, but again...
I'd like to see, I'd like to see the changes applied, but keep it R4, the pond and that, you know, I think better pathway through there, but still keep it, I've got a pretty strong opinion about when I look at the, I look at the map here and I see the majority of that area, overwhelming majority, is R8 there, very little R4. And I think, you know, when you look 20 years down the road or something, to see this entire part of Meridian with thousands and thousands of rooftops, we're going to be, you know, are we going to look back and say, wish we would have had a little bit more, you know, less density in some areas than others? That's just what I see.
So, I don't have the specifics on this, but I do drive past this every single day. And across the way, you've got the golf course and you've got larger lots there. If you come down Black Cat, you've got a fairly large, two good-sized subdivisions with RV garages and whatnot just south of Cherry Lane, and then the neighborhood in the southeast corner of that, I'm thinking that's probably R4 as well, it's pretty close if it's not. So, is there any way to pull that up, Josh, and actually look at it? I knew you were working on that. What's existing, not just what the comp plan has?
Just by way of explanation, the yellow is R4, so that is the bulk of the area is R4 currently. R8 is this kind of orange color, so there's small pockets of R8 spread throughout, and this darker orange is R15. So, the majority of the area, as you can see on the map here, is currently zoned R4.
Are we at the point where we make a motion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Holland.
You know, I still identify with your comments, and, you know, we want to make sure that we take the comprehensive plan and we take the tools that are given to us as a city to evaluate and really weigh where the future of this community is. Looking at this map, you know, there is a lot of R4 there, there's a lot of density growing throughout the whole valley. I just, I think that they've done the best that they can with the piece that they have of trying to make it a really nice R8 project and adding some of those additional amenities. So, with that, I'm going to make a motion. After considering all staff, applicant, and public testimony, I move to recommend approval of, to the city council, file number H-2018-0079, as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of September 20th, 2018, with no modifications.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
It's my understanding that three votes makes the motion carry. Okay, so, we're going to open the next public hearing just for the purpose of continuing for Hill Century Farm Wireless Communications Facility, H-2018-0087, by Horizon Tower Verizon Wireless, has been requested by the applicant to continue to an undetermined date at this time. Can I get a motion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Holland.
I move, we, sorry, I move we postpone the public hearing for Hill Century Farm Wireless Communications Facility, H-2018-0087, to a date in the future as determined by planning staff and the applicant.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to continue to a date, an undetermined date. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed, motion carries. Next, we will open the public hearing for Mountain View High School Addition, H-2018-0089.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, and the next application before you is a request for a conditional use permit. This site consists of 55 acres of land, zoned R4, located at 2,000 South Millennium Way. Adjacent land use and zoning, to the north are offices and multifamily residential uses, zoned LO. To the south are single-family residential uses and a city park, zoned R4. To the east is vacant undeveloped commercial land, multifamily residential and future single-family residential, zoned CG and R15. And to the west is a church and single-family residential uses, zoned R8, R4, and RR in Ada County. 2001, approval was granted for the construction of the high school on this site, subsequent modular classrooms have been approved since then. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation is civic. A conditional use permit is requested for a 25,204 square foot addition to the existing high school. The addition is proposed within a landscaped common area located on the south side of the building adjacent to the cafeteria. The expansion area consists of a two-story classroom wing consisting of 22,600 square feet, which will provide an additional 16 classrooms with support facilities, reducing the need for portable classrooms and reducing the student count in existing classrooms. The remaining 2,600 square feet will be utilized to expand the existing cafeteria to better serve the growing student population. When the high school was originally constructed, education institutions were allowed as a principal permitted use in the R4 zoning district. Since that time, the UDC has been amended and now requires conditional use approval. The proposed addition is subject to the specific use standards listed in the UDC for education institutions. The proposal complies with these standards. There are a total of 1,223 existing parking spaces on the site. 550 are required by the UDC based on the total square footage of the existing structure and the addition, which is 274,928 square feet. The area where the addition is proposed will not encroach over any of the existing parking spaces. Conceptual building elevations were submitted as shown for the proposed addition that are consistent with the existing high school facade and materials. Written testimony has been received from Jacob Rivard, Hummel Architects, he is in agreement with the staff report. Staff is recommending approval with the conditions in the report. Staff will stand for any questions.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Castanelli.
So, they're not going to be losing any parking spaces? Is that correct?
Chairman, Commissioner Castanelli, no, they will not be.
Thank you.
The applicant like to come forward? Please state your name and address for the record.
Name's Jacob Rivard, with Hummel Architects, 2785 Bogus Basin Road, Boise, Idaho, 83702. Sony did a great job going through everything, I don't have anything to add to that, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I do have a question, how, so I'm assuming this is for the intent of increasing student population?
Correct, just as the city has grown, of course, you know, the schools' needs have increased as well, and we need to add a little bit more population. So, yes, we are going to be increasing the school's population density a little bit, however, the big part of this actually is help reduce the portable classrooms and bring the students from the outside, from the west side of the school to inside, and go from there and increase some safety as well.
What's the estimated increase in student population?
I believe it's currently at around 2,100, and it should only increase about a couple hundred, but that's, they're thinking about for the future use, they're not thinking about the current, it all depends on who moves into the area.
Okay. So, this is not intended to be a large addition that increases the student population significantly?
No, this is mainly to help reduce overcrowding that is currently occurring at the moment and to help reduce the need for those portable classrooms that are on the west side.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Castanelli.
So, is the plan to remove some of the portables?
All the portables will be no longer in use.
Okay.
Other questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone here to testify? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify? Okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Castanelli.
I move we close the public hearing for Mountain View High School, file H-2018-0089.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing for H-2018-0089. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed, motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Wilson.
Seems pretty straightforward to me. I mean, the fact of the matter is, these schools, I mean, they, class sizes just increased, so this seems to me to be a reasonable shift away from portables. Give this Mountain View a little bit more capacity, but mostly just to account for an already over, you know, a very populated high school. I'm supportive of it.
Madam Chair, I tend to agree as well. I think adding the extra 16 classrooms and expanding the cafeteria will help take kids out of the portables, and I'd much rather see the kids in one building, because it's a lot easier to manage safety and help keep everybody in the same building, so I don't see any concerns.
Okay.
Well, Madam Chair, there's a certain level of nostalgia with portable buildings, I don't know. But on that, I guess I'll go ahead and throw out a motion there. After considering all staff, applicant, and public testimony, I move to approve, straight approval on a CP, is that right? Okay. File, approve file number H-2018-0089, as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of September 20th, 2018.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded for approval of H-2018-0089. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed, motion carries. Next, we'll move on to the public hearing for Verado West, H-2018-0085, by Devco Development.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. The next applications before you are a request for annexation and zoning and a preliminary plat. There is also a request for a development agreement modification, but that does not require commission action, only City Council. This site consists of 17.35 acres of land, zoned R15, located at the southeast corner of North Locust Grove Road and East Eustick Road at 3090 North Locust Grove. Adjacent land use and zoning to the north is East Eustick Road and single-family residential properties, zoned R4. To the west is North Locust Grove Road and single-family residential properties, zoned R8. To the south are also single-family residential, zoned R8. And to the east is rural residential parcels, zoned RUT in Ada County, and future single-family residential uses in the Verrato East subdivision, zoned R15. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation for this property is medium-density residential, which calls for three to eight units per acre. The applicant is proposing an amendment to the existing development agreement for the Verrato subdivision to include the subject property in the agreement. The first two phases of Verrato exist to the east of this site. This application does not require commission action, only City Council. Annexation and zoning of 19.44 acres of land with an R15 zoning district is requested. The proposed gross density of the development is 7.6 units per acre, consistent with and at the high end of the density desired in the medium-density residential future land use map designation. The applicant is requesting the R15 district specifically for the three-foot wide side yard setbacks and not for density purposes. A preliminary plat is proposed, as shown, that consists of 132 building lots and 18 common lots on 17.35 acres of land in the proposed R15 district. The subdivision is proposed to develop in two phases, starting at the east end of the property. The minimum property size of the proposed building lots is 3,081 square feet with an average lot size of 3,573 square feet. Access to the development is proposed from the east through Verrato subdivision and from the south through Chamberlain Estates subdivision. No direct access is proposed via Eustick or Locust Grove roads. All streets within the development are proposed to be public, although reduced street sections, 27 feet wide, are proposed for Laughridge Avenue, Ring Neck Street, Stormy Drive, and Summer Brook Avenue, the Loop Road, which is basically, if you can see my pointer here, this loop right around here. This will only allow parking on one side of the street, on the inner side of the loop. The UDC requires a minimum of 10% qualified open space and one-site amenity is provided. The applicant is proposing 10% or 1.73 acres of qualified open space, consisting of internal common area, a micro path, and half of the street buffers along adjacent arterial streets. A 6,500-square-foot dog park with a seating area and segment of the city's multi-use pathway system is proposed adjacent to the south slough at the southeast corner of the development as amenities, and that is this area right down in here. If you can see my pointer, the small dog park is right here, and then the multi-use pathway runs here along the corner of the property. A mix of single-family residential detached and attached homes, but mostly attached, are proposed along the north and west boundaries of the site adjacent to Eustick and Locust Grove roads, both arterial streets. Detached homes are proposed internal to the development. The attached homes will be single-level and are designed to serve mature empty nesters. Detached homes are proposed to be two stories in height and range in size from 1,377 to 1,850 square feet. Those adjacent to the arterial streets will be single-story in height. Conceptual building elevations were submitted for future homes in this development. Building materials consist of horizontal and vertical siding with stone and veneer accents. The attached units are required to comply with the design standards listed in the Architectural Standards Manual. Staff does have some concerns on this application and has discussed it with the applicant. Along the south boundary of the site, where the red arrows or the red lines are indicated, there is not an adequate transition in lot sizes to existing lots. There are three lots or portions thereof to every single lot. If you can see the existing lot lines here at the bottom in a lighter line type. Staff is recommending more comparable lot sizes are provided along this boundary. So I also, staff visited the site today of the first Verrato development to the east of this site, and just took some photos of the homes that have been constructed in that development. So if you take a look at this bottom corner picture here, this is the rear of some of the homes along the multi-use pathway in that development to the east. So that is the, basically, the view from the existing homes and Chamberlain Estates of how the applicant's proposed. This one does have a common area through here, but the rest of these would be more similar to what they'd be looking at. Secondly, during the project review meeting with city staff, several concerns were raised with the number of narrow lots and the impacts that it has to on-street parking, which is lessened due to the number of driveways in close proximity. As you can see here, this demonstrates that. If you note the parking pads here and just the tiny little landscape areas in between, it doesn't allow for any on-street parking next to these lots where the detached homes are proposed. The ACHD or staff report, we just got the final report in today. They have requested that the city ensure adequate parking is provided onsite, as on-street parking is restricted. There is no on-street, and that means off-street, basically. There's no onsite parking proposed in this development. Past experience has shown the lack of reduced, lack of or reduced on-street parking has created problems with visitors parking in restricted areas that then block travel lanes needed for emergency access. And then they also park in adjacent neighborhoods overflowing. That has been an issue for fire department that they've noted. The narrow lots also limit the variation in housing types and limits the homes being constructed on the lots from having varied step backs and building setbacks within the development to articulate and break up the front wall planes of structures visible from interior streets. You can see here from the picture, they're pretty alike in the appearance from the street. All homes are constructed the same setback with a garage-dominated design that diminishes community character. The applicant is requesting that this development be combined with the previous phases to construct much of the same housing types. The commission should determine if more variation in lot sizes is needed in this area to provide more housing diversity throughout the entire Verrato development. Lastly, while the proposed open space meets the minimum standards, it's not ideal, as it's all located at the east end of the subdivision, at the entrance to the development. You can see here on the, you can see here that it's located in these two areas. Staff is recommending it's relocated, specifically this area right here, is relocated further to the west to be more central and accessible to all residents. This could be achieved by switching the locations, the configuration of blocks three and four, or five, which is these two blocks, well, this is the block right here, switching the configuration of this with one of these two blocks, and losing two of the building lots, which would result in a through common area. So for example, this could be removed and create more of a through common area here that would be more open and accessible to all residents within the development, rather than just those on the east end of the development. Further, due to the small lot sizes proposed in this development, staff is recommending a minimum of an additional 8,000 square feet or .18 of an acre, and this is based on the removal of those two lots right there, roughly, of common areas provided along with an additional site amenity, such as a gazebo, covered picnic area with picnic tables or sports courts or other comparable amenity. Staff has requested the applicant submit an updated plan prior to the commission meeting showing the requested change. However, the applicant opted not to and is requesting approval of the open space and site amenities as proposed. Written testimony was received from Conger Management Group, the applicant. Staff is recommending approval with the conditions and Exhibit B of the staff report. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Castanelli.
I've got lots of questions tonight. Sonya, how come there's no access out to, I think, Locust Grove would be difficult, but Eustick, was that, was that just the development or was that ACHD?
Chairman, Commissioner Castanelli, our UDC restricts access to arterial streets, such as Eustick Road and Locust Grove Road. And whereas access was already available from local streets, that's where the applicant proposed it.
Okay. And then another question I had, you kind of were touching on the parking and looking at that. In the, in the other phases, I'm not seeing any mailboxes. Are there, do they have the, kind of the common mailbox locations? Because obviously, putting a mailbox in between the houses, that really messes with, even if you could squeeze one car in there.
Yes, they have. If you look in this picture right here in the earlier phases, Commissioner Castanelli, there's a little common group mailbox thing there.
Okay.
Sonya, are you finished?
Yeah.
Sonya, was there a conversation with the applicant about putting in some single-level in between the two stories to give some variety to the roofline and the, you know, the backs of the houses looking so similar, which is a concern for staff? Is that a possibility?
Chairman, I'm not sure the applicant could answer that question. I know single-level was proposed along the perimeter of the development adjacent to the arterial streets, for sure. And I think there might have been a mix internal, but I'm not positive about that.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Holland.
Sonya, could you possibly read for us what the written comments were from Conger Management Group? I couldn't seem to find that in the...
Yes, it was received and entered into the record. Do you have it accessible, Shar? If you'll give me just a moment, I will find that here.
I'm sorry, audience members. Can we keep it just a little quiet? Because we do have a lot of microphones on and they pick up. It's okay, thank you. The hearing is being recorded.
I'm, is it on yet? My, is Mike, can you hear mine?
It's on.
Okay.
Would you like me to read it in its entirety, Chairman?
How long is it?
Not too long.
Okay.
To whom it may concern, Conger Management Group would like to express its support of the Verrato West neighborhood application. Verrato West will be a great addition to the city of Meridian for the following reasons. Verrato West will provide a quality housing product at a price that is well below the median home price for new construction in the Meridian area. Verrato West will create jobs and support the construction industry in the area, and Verrato West will add to the city of Meridian's tax base on a property that has been designated as infill. The investment in municipal services and roadways to serve this property has already been made. The utility connection fees and roadway impact fees that this development will generate will help to pay for that infrastructure. Conger Management Group thanks you for your consideration of this matter. Should you have any further questions, please contact Diane Jossis.
Okay, thank you. Are there any more questions for staff? Okay, would the applicant please come forward?
Let's see, Sonya, can you put mine up for me, please? Madam Chair, members of the commission, Jim Conger, 4824 West Fairview Avenue. Yeah, so a little shocked here. We're getting a few things at 6 o'clock that we hadn't seen in the staff report or heard anything out of staff. So I guess, starting out, understanding a few things aesthetically, architecturally, late notice. We are doing our best to meet all of your code requirements, as far as the city of Meridian goes, while bringing you an affordable, quality housing product to the city. Night in and night out, we're here, you're here, we're seeing three and a half homes per acre over and over and over again, and there is a place for that. I totally agree. Not everywhere do we want the cookie cutter, three and a half lots per acre. However, if you're interested in a fresh, innovative, quality housing product, well, that's what we're about, and that's what this property is about, at this location of Locust Grove and Eustick. We are not your typical R4, R8, three-unit-per-acre subdivision, specifically here. We thought we heard Meridian is interested in innovative product. I've been on lots of, I'm on lots of code boards, I'm on every, I'm on the comp plan board. We are the housing product between a fourplex apartment project and your three and a half lot-per-acre normal subdivision that you get in, that you get in here night and night out. We're that bridge between the two. Without us, you get the fourplex project in certain corners, which is, this is one of those corners that we are competing with fourplex buyers on this property in particular. And it should be noted, with all our innovations, we meet and exceed code on everything. We aren't asking for a waiver, we're not asking for a favor, we're not asking for anything. We're asking to meet code, go through code, not get last-minute items at 6 o'clock. Quick, moving on, just want to quickly run through your comp plan and your zoning codes, just to make sure everybody's on the same page. We had a question earlier, and I just want to make sure we're all there. I'll first talk, take a moment to walk through your city's comp plan, and then the zone. So the comp plan identifies the land use, and it actually regulates the range of densities allowed by the city. We are not asking for a step up to get the density in the project you have. We have been in front of you numerous times, asking for steps up, for good reasons to step up. This property already has a comp plan that supports the project that's in front of you today. There is no step up being asked for. The comp plan dictates the density. The zoning plan, now moving on, designates, so the R15 we're asking for is the dimensional standards. It's your setbacks, it's your frontage, it's your lot size. R15 is a terrible name. In fact, you will see us again, October 15th or 17th or 18th, somewhere in there. We will be in front of you, as we've requested to the city, to change the zoning names, so we no longer have to go to neighborhood meetings, we no longer have to come in front of you and City Council and talk about R15 like it's 15 units to the acre, because it's got nothing to do with 15 units to the acre. So again, zoning code is all about the type and everything you already know, so I'm not going to bore you any further with codes. But we are grateful to be in front of you tonight to present our vision for the Verrato West community. What you see tonight is a result of nine months' worth of work on this particular project with your city planning staff, nine months, and the various review agencies, to include fire department, numerous meetings, police department, Public Works, Irrigation District, numerous meetings, and Ada County Highway District, several meetings, not a big transportation issue here, as well as our own design team. It's been a collaborative process, and we are darn proud of what we've got in front of you tonight. Our neighborhood... Our neighborhood is located, as we said, at the southeast corner of Eustick and Locust Grove. This is an ideal type of project, because the entire perimeter road is already installed. All the arterial is in, the sidewalks are in, the streets are in. We will be using the existing entrance of ours from Eustick that's in the green area. The Highway District and your city of Meridian code request minimal access to arterials. This is a location where we're doing a continuation of Verrato One. We're happy to go through our neighborhood, because we're proud of our neighborhood into that corner area. And so we are satisfying the Highway District and Meridian by not doing another entry to Eustick. We are also tying on to your water main and connecting it. We are tying on to the existing sewer that's already stubbed this property in two locations. Every reason why this has a good comp plan designation, as well as a good continuation of our neighborhood. With the popularity of our Verrato housing product in your city, that's definitely bustling. We have sold out Phase One. We're starting our homes of Phase Two in October, which is in a couple weeks, the foundations before cold weather. which is in a couple weeks, the foundations before cold weather. And we are lucky enough and fortunate enough to work with the adjacent landowner in what we're now calling Verrato West, to be able to buy that property, which allows us to bring and expand our existing Verrato community, as you can see on the slide, from our green area, expanding into the, what we're calling Verrato West. Verrato is a continuation of our platform from other communities we have with this product and price point in Meridian. What we offer is a well-thought-through, high-quality housing product. I work with One Builder, Black Rock Homes, all the product, all the architecture, all the land planning, and the, the neighborhood network is all thought through with the team that's going to the end result, which is to the end user. We offer a distinct variety of housing from your typical Meridian subdivision, I continue to allude to that. We are close to goods in this locations and services, and that the people want and need, they can walk, bike, take a short commute to entertainment, shopping, work, or food, whether at a restaurant or grocery store. That is why the comp plan is so good right here, we are in the middle of everything. The efficient lot sizes accommodate homes, as Sonia indicated, that range from 1,350 to 1,900 square feet, with price points of $240,000 to $280,000. For those reasons, we're able to compete against the apartment project. I continue to say that, that is very important. We are a perfect bridge between that three-and-a-half lot-per-acre and the apartments. As you get close to busy roads like Eustick and Locust Grove on a very busy corner, you cannot continue to put three units-per-acre in different type of product in that busy environment. Verrato is set up in such a way that our HOA maintains all our homeowners' yards. This does several things. It ensures that all the yards are well-maintained, all the time. It ensures all the grass clippings end up at our landscaper's yard in a mulching environment instead of in the dump. And in, but most importantly, it allows our owners to spend their free time, enjoying their family, and doing whatever they do when you're not doing yard work, because I don't care for yard work either. It's very important to us that we don't sell to investors. This is a for-sale, for-owned product. Our owners live in homes we sell, and that becomes very important to the fabric of our communities, as the neighbors take time to get to know and actually rely on one another. There is always a place for people who need and want to rent, it's just not in our owner-occupied The Verrato amenity package, which I'll go into next, is as amazing as our housing product. The integrating the Verrato West with our original Verrato community allows the owners, and our West owners, to have full access to all the open space amenities in the original Verrato community, and vice versa. Including the new, which in the new Verrato West will be an active play park, small dog, dog park. Staff keeps calling it a small dog park, it is a small dog, dog park. It's specifically that, and actually is requested by all our existing residents in the first Verrato. I never thought I would build a dog park in my life, it is the number-one item that came out of our interviews with all our existing homeowners. Including, so, including in Verrato West will be the new small dog, dog park, active play park, and the park shade structure that Sonia alluded to, that she added. Verrato at full buildout will consist of over five acres of landscape, open space, two separate neighborhood parks that you can see that I put in the red highlight, and, and for the record, we are 700 feet from the West boundary. Your code's block lengths for road stubs are 700 feet. So, if my park, which is 700 feet from the last house to the West, is too far for someone to walk, then your code has a block length issue between streets. So, to even come up with, what we did is we have, and we'll go into the regional pathway and all the reasons why our park is where it's at, but it's centrally located, basically we have a third, a third, and a third, is where the two parks are located. We have also built, by the time this project's done, 2,000 feet of your city's regional pathway, which is in the red line all the way along the Finch lateral. That's no small feat, that is actually now almost ready to be partially used in a loop environment, because our stub on our east boundary goes, goes to nowhere. Next, our amenity package. Our amenity package is off the charts. What, I mean, we have fenced child safety around our tall lots, we don't, this isn't our first neighborhood. We, we, with our tighter density and our efficient home sites and lots, we put in a better-than-normal amenity package. We've got the play structure, we have the climbing dome, we have the swing sets, we have the basketball court, we have a concrete track that's specifically designed to go around that green area, that is for the kids on their trike and their big wheels and everything else. We see it, that isn't accidentally a border for the grass, it's purposefully put in place. We have seating benches, we have active, open park space for soccer and throwing a ball, which is in our new park. We have park shade structure that Sonia added. We have a small dog, dog park, to meet all our current residents' needs. We have numerous passive landscape end caps to provide visual happiness as you drive through the community. So, both projects combined is a total of 36 acres. With the list in front of you, we have well over seven different amenities, code requires two. So, to hear us barely getting by with minimums is beyond comprehension, I, it's actually irritating. We originally had a concern with city staff placing a condition to add the park shade structure and add one more amenity to this, we are dropping our concern and we're going to accept that condition. We actually think it's going to be a good addition over in that active ball area and soccer area. So, we're, we're, we got no problem with that, and we'll add it to our already boisterous amenity and open space package. I would like to know, this is the first time we're in front of you, most or all of our projects exceed code minimums, and this project's no example. So, to say we meet code is basically not right. So, we do have five issues, four issues, five issues, I'll go through quickly, I'm running out of time, because I went on an original rant. Transition to the South boundary is our, is our first one. On our entire boundary, we have 22 lots to 13, we have a ratio of 1.7 to 1. We believe that, you know, your staff is saying we are not comparable or like-sized. Your code doesn't say you must be comparable or like-sized on the boundary. We are the transition that ultimately has to get to the busy Eustick Road. We see our adjacent owner-occupied homes as being just the right location with transition towards the busy Eustick Road. You will hear tonight that we would like them single-level versus two-level. These are two-story homes at this location. Homes next to us may be single-level, can always be remodeled to two-story, but they are going to be two, two-story homes. You make the lots bigger, they're still going to be a bigger two-story home. So, so we are the right transition to get to the density needed to, to be that product that competes. Planning, we'll move to, staff is wanting to pipe the Finch lateral. Your staff is calling it the South Slough. Nampur Meridian Irrigation District is actually the jurisdiction who's in charge of this, they're calling it, it's the Finch lateral, it's a delivery ditch. So, we want to pipe it, your staff is saying, "Don't pipe it," we're requesting that you override that. If you look at the Finch lateral upstream, which is the picture on the right, if I leave it open, I've got to put the chain link, because Nampur Meridian won't let you not have chain link next to a delivery ditch, it's not a slough, it's a delivery ditch. But you look at our beautiful Movado project at the Five Mile Creek, where we built the regional pathway for the city, we didn't have to do the chain link, because that is a creek that needs preserved. So, we don't need to preserve the Finch lateral, you won't get to see it or even get near it anyhow. Quickly going into more open space, we have 10.2% on this phase, we have more than that combined at 12%. I just put clouds around everything that is our open space. Again, when you combine us all together, we've got five acres of landscape space, we exceed code, we don't need more open space, and we don't need our HOA to have to maintain more open space, we, we have ample. Relocate the local park. This isn't a park, for crying out loud, this is, as you can see in the bottom, this is a focal park, focal point. When you drive in, I don't want to put two homes there and put headlights in their window, this is a focal park. This isn't an active park, we have active, but we have two active parks, we have a regional greenbelt. This is passive space, which is hard to understand for staff, but this is passive space, and I think we are almost there. In closing, we have worked continuously with staff, we respectfully request the modification of those five items. Delete the condition 11C, which is a lot transition, delete the condition of the Finch lateral, I think I've showed you plenty of reasons why that is going to be a better environment if it's piped. We have 10.2% open space, we have 12 and 1/2 combined, we will exceed. Delete relocating of the interior, if, if you do nothing else for me, at least don't make us move and put lots, where I've got to put cars driving right by them and putting lights in the front window, it makes no sense. And then, the construct all arterial, this is actually a development agreement item, so actually, that the final item may not, may not matter to PNC, but that is to do our Phase Two landscaping of Locust Grove, and we do Phase Two. With that, I will stand for any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner, are there any questions for the applicant?
I have a couple.
Commissioner Cassinelli?
Thank you for your passion.
I love it.
I have, you alluded to something a couple times, so I'm going to kind of ask a question that may come off a little odd. How do you guarantee it's going to be a small dog, dog park?
Well, Madam Chair, Commissioner Cassinelli, you are absolutely right. I am not certain what small dog is, but if you have a 108-pound dog, you are going to be pretty limited in there. But you are correct, you could have a bigger dog, and we are not going to kick them out.
Okay.
But mostly small dogs.
You went through, I just had to get that question answered.
Fair.
Because you covered it a couple times. The Finch lateral, you, you went through that pretty quickly. You want to do, you want to do something similar to the Five Mile, to what you did on the Five Mile Creek, go over that again if you could.
Yeah, no, Madam Chair, Commissioner Cassinelli, no, we are proposing to pipe, so I want to pipe this corner, and there's two reasons. I have been working with Nampur Meridian Irrigation District for over nine months on this as well. You were coming up and leaving, so that red circle is coming up and then making a 90-degree turn and going off our property. So, there is a high likelihood, if I were to leave this open, I, that corner, once we start putting more homes and everything around it, then the irrigation district doesn't like these 90-degree corners, because it's no longer a pasture where they can go fix them when they are rolled away. So, our plan is to pipe that irrigation ditch, not a creek that needs preserved, and run it basically underneath, and you can see the visual below, is the regional pathway, and this ditch will be piped, you know, beside the regional pathway. That way, we are able to have a fun environment, coming, the regional pathway is going to come into our open park, yes, it's private, but very enjoyable, wide-open space and comfortable, and then move through the property. So, we want to tile the ditch, and it is a Finch lateral, the city's identifying it as a South Slough that needs preserved, but we need to tile that ditch in that location.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then, one more question. You were talking about the, you referenced owner-occupied homes in there, and this wasn't investment. Are you planning on putting something in the HOA that limits that? I don't even, I don't even know legally what can be done that, I'm looking to you, because, because you probably know. But, so you, you stressed that point, what, how are you planning on?
No, Madam Chair, Commissioner Cassinelli, that is a wonderful question, and, and we are very passionate about that. Our, our legal firms, Givens personally, we have worked through in our previous developments, and do have restrictions within the law of renting. You, obviously, if it's a relative, you can have rentals. And, you know, our real estate contracts have a box that they physically have to check and initial that says they are not an investor. We also are sales professionals when they interview every buyer, but of course, we have one or two always slip through. I, I would be lying if we, if we didn't. In, in that case, our CCNRs also regulate no rental signs, so that is in the CCNRs. And there are other restrictions within the law of no Airbnb and things of that nature, that gets a little, little finer scale of the law, but they are in our HOAs, and we're passionate about it.
Okay.
CCNRs, not in our HOAs.
Yes.
I think what Commissioner Cassinelli is asking is, can you explicitly say you can't have more than a certain percentage of renters in an area? I think that's what, what his question is.
Yeah, that, yes.
Okay.
Can you address that? Can you, are you, do you have a number in the CCNRs and of what can be?
No, Madam Chair, Commissioner Cassinelli, no, we don't have a percentage, we, we have some pretty strict rules that makes it pretty difficult to rent homes.
You're going to limit it as much as legally you can?
That is correct. That is correct.
Madam Chair, excuse me, I would like to make a clarification on the record for the applicant. I did speak with him earlier about this, but I just wanted the commission to be aware that the conceptual elevations submitted by the applicant do show overhanging eaves here, and it's, it's my understanding from the applicant that they will not be constructing eaves in all areas on all homes. So, I just would like that addressed, and then also for you to be aware that the elevations included do not necessarily represent that. So, if you have one, feelings one way or the other, I would like it noted on the, on the record, please.
Thank you, Sonia. While we're on that topic, would you like to give us an idea which homes, are all the two stories going to not have eaves? Can you speak to that, please?
Madam Chair, Members of the Commission, so I don't know, you know, we went through this at length at our last project, which was this same product, which was called Oldberg, and it was here with Mr. Yearsley, and what we worked through and understood, you know, every, you know, again, One Builder, Black Rock Homes, every facet of the home has been through a design purpose through their architect and through, through their sales team, and the eaves are no different. What, what ends up happening is there are eaves in the front of the house, they go back about 25 feet, but because of fire code, those eaves are expensive. So, we are talking about money, which you're never supposed to talk about, it's approximately $2,200 from, so we put eaves in the first 25 feet, 20 feet of the home, every home's a little bit different. And then, from that point backwards, we do not. Our buyers, we have actually taken buyers and walked them through fronts of homes and backs of homes. So, our elevations are strong from the front, we do not put eaves down and find that value. We are working desperately hard to get a product that gets under the median price, that fits in these areas where we compete with that nasty-looking four-plex product, and it takes every bit of working through, meeting code, and, and, and then dealing with the fire code and everything else, to get a product that, that we can bring to market and, and give these Meridian buyers. We're talking about, and I hear, we don't have diversity in our neighborhood, I have 120 homes, or 130 homes. I'm in an area of a sea of three units-per-acre. We are the diversity of product. You're not af, we have two home products in less than, than 30 acres, and actually, actually we have four home products, because we have the homes in the back. So, we are the diversity of product. To be able to just draw a small little circle on a big map of Meridian and say, "We're not diverse," is no way to look at planning, or even regional planning, or any type of planning.
So, would it be safe to say that the single levels that run along Eustick on the north side, the essentially duplexes, those will likely have the eaves, but the two stories won't?
No, Madam Chair, the, all the housing product does not have eaves past the 25-footed to further, on the sides.
On the sides, okay.
They do in the rear. Now, we work very hard, I am not as passionate, Black Rock, my partner, Black Rock Homes, is as passionate. We do single-level homes against arterials, because we don't like driving down arterials and seeing those nasty two stories with the aluminum foil in the windows and everything that comes with those. So, we have gone out of our way to take care of our internal buyers, we have gone out of our way as a public benefit to try to make the arterials aesthetically pleasing, and we, we have a lot of things to mesh together, to start picking a few flies out of the ointment is awful difficult at, at the pulpit, for sure.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Holland?
One more question for you is about some of the parking concerns.
Yes.
That that loop is a little bit narrower than a traditional... That that loop is a little bit narrower than a traditional road would be. Could you explain a little bit on what the intention was with the small road and only parking on one side of it?
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioner Holland, I would love to. And I will start out with a clarification of staff is, we are not requesting reduced widths. This is now a typical standard. There's a 27-foot standard and a 33-foot standard. So these aren't a waiver. These aren't this, and it's not that, for sure. So we definitely have done 27-foot roadways in all our other neighborhoods. This one is a local street. So typically, you have ACHD constantly working now, and if you've met a handful of their commissioners, to get their roads narrower for maintenance over the next 100 years. Nobody is doing wide roads and getting through ACHD unless you have specific traffic counts that force you to. So if I go in with wide roads, I don't get through the commission at ACHD. Now, you will see my end caps in the center area if I'm smart enough to run this mouse. So I have parking on all the end caps. So I have no parking on the side of the homes, which there wasn't a lot of parking either way. So I have, I don't know where it went.
Do you like your presentation?
I have, either way, that's why I'm in yours. Sorry about that. So talking about those end caps. So what we have first and foremost is we have four parking spots in every house. We have two garages, and we have two parking outside of the garage, which is required by code. I'm not giving you anything extra. We know that. But the code is there because that's the amount of parking needed for a house. Why are we, this isn't a fourplex. I'm not at 14 units per acre. I'm at seven. I mean, so I've got the four spots. And then we have parking along the side of our roads against that landscaped area, which again, and then, I don't know. We have been in our neighborhoods. We have finished Salterra. We have finished Sovee. We are done with one phase of the Movado that's actually done forever, and then we're moving across the creek that you saw earlier. We have gone and stayed in our neighborhoods after hours and watched functions. Sure, possibly a Super Bowl party is going to be an issue, but I suspect that's an issue in my own neighborhood. So parking on one side of the street, having 27-foot wide streets is responsible, and it's the way of the future. And it's not asking for a reduction.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Cassinelli?
I, in looking at the, at the map that's up here, I think what, you know, when you look at it, you see the parks, the green space are up front. I get what you're, I get where you're at. I wouldn't want, you know, if I was living up front there, I wouldn't want headlights coming in that access. When you look at it, I guess when you look at it, when you take the whole picture, it's a little different. There's still nothing on the west end over there by Locust Grove. Have you, I'm just, in looking at this, and I'm just thinking, I'm thinking out loud, you've got the end caps there. What if you were to eliminate maybe one of the end caps on each of those blocks and put a pathway, stuck it down the middle? Put a pathway down the middle instead of clumping everything together? You're breaking it up a little bit. It's the matter of, I think what, see, I think what's going on is, in seeing that green space, it's all together up front. The end caps don't really, because of the way they are, don't really appear to be the green space. If they were in the middle and broke up some of those lots going straight down the center from east to west, from that park, does that, does that make sense?
It's killing me, so I'll jump in here, Madam Chair and Commissioner Cassinelli. So that block length is 240 feet. That block length is nothing. So as far as breaking up homes or breaking it up for pedestrian, I mean, block lengths are 700 feet. They're 1,000 feet for pedestrian. So we're 240, we're not even 25% of your pedestrian length block length in the code. So I'm not trying to be a minimalist here, but we don't need more places in the center. We need landscaping on the ends to help shield once everything grows up. You're looking at photos of a brand-new development, and three years is different, and six years is much different. But those are better suited to have, and I said, little pockets of happiness when you're driving by them is definitely what the land plan and planners are after. Trying to break up a 240-foot length block length is not, 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 certainly anything. And we aren't at the end. I guess I keep trying to come back and make it even easier with this one is, we've got the residents in the west that are coming not only to the park, but to the regional pathway. And again, the center one's not a park. It's a viewing pleasure when I've had a real rough day at work and I'm coming home, and I get to look at a couple of things visual pleasing instead of the front, in somebody's front window. So I've got the park in the third. I've got that third coming, and then they're getting into the regional pathway. They're going across that regional pathway. My top lot and everything and that amazing amenities that I put in phase one is at the other third point. I go all the way to the right side of your screen with my Oberg. We picked up the five acres at the end, and that one got approved a couple of months ago. So what we have is, we were able to finish this little infill area, bring them all in to a regional pathway, two amazing park systems that we did centrally locate. I mean, it is centrally located, and it's 700 feet. Your employees to this building have to walk 510 feet from the farthest parking spot. That's almost more criminal to me than someone going to a park at 700 feet. I mean, you walk further at Walmart than you will to get to this park. I mean, it is logistically there for a reason, and that's because it's the third part, and it's part of the regional pathway coming out. We combine the two. Moving and trying to migrate that to the west doesn't give our residents any advantage. In fact, I think you're taking away from combining and making something super special than making a couple normal whole-home things.
Mr. Conger, how are we going to keep people from parking on the side of the street where they're not supposed? Obviously, it would make sense that they wouldn't because there's driveways that are dividing it up such that they are not supposed to. But they might. So is there, other than it just being prohibitive because there's not enough space in between each driveway, is there another signage? Is there anything else that can be done to make it clear that parking is not permitted there?
No, it's a wonderful question, Madam Chair. So the answer to that is, yes, it is restricted by signage, and those signs are every 75 feet. So we have signage. And then why, and the other luxury I have with my builder partner is, these homes aren't sold till they're built. These aren't custom homes. So nobody's out there buying a homesite and not understanding what they're buying into. These homes are finished, and usually five or six at a time down a row, they are sold. So someone buying this house, it's actually already built. The environment's already there. They are seeing the no parking. They are seeing the parking, and they fully understand it. Now, we are in this development. We have been in this development for two years to date. We will be in it another three and a half years. Our sales agents are onsite. It's an onsite office. They educate. If someone is parking, then we educate. And half the time, we educate our own subcontractors while we're temporarily building. But we do that as well.
So you mentioned that you don't think that the density on the south side in relationship to the south neighborhood is a concern. You said you had a 1.7 to 1 ratio. But the looks of it, now, I know this isn't to scale, but it looks a lot more dense than that. And you have the two stories. Do you have anything additional to add in that regard?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, certainly. I can go into it even further. So we take a lot of time in our original designs of what, this isn't the first time we've been in front of anybody, whether it be commission or council, talking about transition to neighbors. So if you look at the big homes on the corner, you can see in the bottom left, and then in the middle, and then the bottom right, those homes are built sideways. I actually get to look at their trailers, their RVs and their trailers. We're not complaining that they don't have CCNRs to prohibit it and the side of their building. So those are immediately taken away because I've got one home living up to their backyard. I've got the other home that's staring directly into their RVs. The other one is a little wider lot. It's got a storied shed that lives to them. We have several homes that are, the blue and the yellow are about 2 to 1 in that range. We have one that could be 2 and 1/4. If you took half of a lot out and added another quarter of a lot in, about 2 and 1/4. So as far as the transition, what? Go ahead and remove one lot, and then now I just build a wider two-story home? I mean, there is no gain. At least we have breaks between the homes, and we are the transition. Again, I have the task to get density to transition to major arterials and then still come back to the neighbor group. We have done this transition before. This is a healthy transition. Now, certainly, neighbors would rather have the ranch. We know that. I respect that. Everybody would rather have the ranch except, you know, the guy buying the property, of course. So we have worked hard to be a decent transition. I don't know where losing one lot makes the transition any less enjoyable for the neighbors.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Hey, thank you guys.
At this time, we will now take public testimony.
Madam Chair, we have six people signed up for public testimony. The first person is Michael Simpson.
Thank you for listening to my testimony.
Please state your name and address for the record.
So I'm Michael Simpson, 1918 East Camay. I live on the house that the, what is it, the Finch lateral curves around. And so I had a few concerns here. One is, is there a plan to do the routing of the irrigation through there? Because it, the lateral goes underneath the road. One of my concerns is, is if they make the piping too large, that what it will do is it'll push, because, you know, you have a high density of houses out there. If, you know, say it rains an inch of rain in, say, an hour, that water's got to go somewhere. And if it all sort of comes out that pipe, it will back up and it will flood my house. So that's a big concern I have there. Another thing is, is the no entrance to the Verado West subdivision. And I guess I don't understand why they can't put an entrance, especially maybe if they made the entrance way to the, way to the east or something? Because I see that the summer wind across the street has a, has an entrance. And so I guess if that's an ACHD issue, I guess there might not be any way of getting around it. I guess the concern to me is, is, you know, traffic between about 3:00 and 7:00, trying to get out from our Chamberlain Estates subdivision, it's pretty much congested there. So really, you only have one entrance into this subdivision, and you're putting 132 homes. That's, you know, if you think, okay, well, I got four people per household, that's 500 people. That basically you have that Verado entrance needs to serve, and that's already congested. So how are you, you know, if you have to have emergency services, how are you going to serve those people? I mean, I'm very concerned about the safety of the community and how well these, you know, these new subdivisions. You know, I just, I don't want to see anybody get hurt. I guess another issue I have is, so I would be, the dog park, the proposed dog park, would be in back of my house. And I noticed that they took the path right up to the edge of the, the sides of the lateral. So, or basically, the, it looks like they got a path, and then it would go on to what would be private property. Because that, you know, you have the sides of the lateral there, which I believe is owned by the Meridian Nampa Irrigation District. And so, especially if you have water coming out of, you know, one pipe that's coming out of there and then it's going into another pipe, it may make that area really, maybe that water will go through there very rapidly. So I would definitely want to make sure that there is kind of a fence so that basically, you know, small kids wouldn't like go out of the park area and then go right down to the, right into the lateral. And another thing that I'm kind of concerned about is just, you know, them getting in there and playing in that water or something like that. I just, I think it'd need to be fenced off, and I don't think, you know, having a trail go to the end of there just would encourage people to kind of cut across out onto the street, trespass over that area, potentially disturb the neighbors.
Okay. I'm sorry, sir. We only can give everyone three minutes just for time's sake. Thank you so much.
Next person we have is Chris Catherton.
Good evening. Chris Catherton, 1838 East Camay. The subdivision he's doing is a very beautiful one. There's a lot of concerns with all of us in Chamberlain Estates. Ours is, I'm right there on Camay, and I'm going to have two and kind of a quarter homes, two-story homes behind us. And we had talked to Jim before at the meeting and asked if, you know, for the folks on Camay, if they couldn't have the one-story homes behind us. Our subdivision has been there for 20-plus years. We're well-established. It would just be nice if we could be granted the one-story homes along there. And I know that's a couple of lots he would lose, but it gives us a little bit of privacy. And it would work really well for all of us there on Camay on those seven houses that are going to have that butted up to us. So I'd appreciate some real serious consideration on your part to maybe amend the plan. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Paul Nielsen, 1812 East Camay Drive, Meridian. If you could put the map up showing the color coding of the homes and the lots. My lot borders or backs up to the new development. It's the one that's had the different colors for the existing homeowners. From looking at that map, my house would back up to about 2 and 1/2 or more of these new homes. And yes, thank you. Mine's the, does this mouse work on here? Mine's his property here. So to me, that looks like more than 2 and 1/2 new lots. My concern is, is looking out my back window and seeing a two-story wall behind my home. In talking to Mr. Conger when he had a neighborhood meeting, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is those homes would be 15 feet from my property line. So I will look out my windows, look up, and there will be a house or houses. Also, from my understanding in that meeting, the homes are six feet apart. That's how far six feet is. So what I would really like to see is single-level homes along there. It transitions from mostly single-level homes in our neighborhood to there, and then across the street in the development to the two-story homes. I'm not opposed to the development. When I bought my home 20 years ago, I'm an original homeowner there. I knew at some point it would be developed. I'm surprised it lasted 20 years before it got developed. But like I say, I'm just very concerned about looking out and seeing a wall of homes. Mr. Conger also stated that around the perimeter on Locust Grove and Eustick, they put single-level homes. Because he says, they don't want people driving down the streets looking up at a nasty two-story home with aluminum foil in their windows. Well, I appreciate that for the development. He has to think of the people that will be buying the homes. But for the people that are already living next to the new development, how about a little consideration for us? So now, I will be, someone who lived there for 20 years, have to look out at a nasty two-story home with tin foil in its windows. Because also with them, those homes being two stories, if they plant a tree in their backyard, it's going to take 20 years for it to provide shade to those windows. And those windows are facing south. So in the summer months, they're going to get direct sunlight. I know because my home faces south, I get it on the front side of my house. So I know what it's going to do. So all I'd like to see is them switch to single-levels homes along the border between Chamberlain Estates and their development. So it's not like we have to look out our back doors and see a wall. Because that's what I see. Yeah, I'm not crazy about the density of it, but that's life, you know? Meridian's grown like a weed. It's not, that's not going to stop. It's not, that's not going to stop. But like I say, just looking at a wall is not good. I've considered planting hops to make my own wall. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
My name's Chuck Catherton. I live at 1838 East Camay, right next door to Paul, who was just up here before me. I have the same concerns as Paul. Looking out our back windows, we look up, straight up, and we're going to see these houses, which you saw pictures of there, and they're not that all appealing from the back. And we have to look at that every day. And they're looking right down into our backyards. Alls we're asking is the same thing the staff was asking. Just put one-story houses along that side of the street between us and their next street. And just, and I have to agree with the lady that was up here, too. She said, we got two houses looking down into our backyard all the time. And so, those people driving down Eustick, you know, they'll see it on their way to work, and they're on the way home. They'll see the one-story houses, and they'll think, oh, that's pretty cool. But we have to look at it all the time. So, that's our link. The rest of the subdivision's great. We like it. We just don't want to look at two-story houses, three of them, behind our house. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Megan Izzo. I'm not sure if I pronounced that, sorry.
Hi, I'm Megan Izzo. I live at 1958 East Camay, so just down a couple, across from that park area.
Could you speak directly into the microphone?
Sorry, of course, across from that park area. And, yeah, I'm echoing all of those. I feel like I'm lucky because I have that little bit of green space behind me. But the rest of these houses, I mean, we've been watching this development go up, and they're so close together, and they're going to be so close to us. And I also have concerns about the entrance and all of the cars coming through our neighborhood. I have a four-year-old, and I'm just really worried about the amount of traffic with that high density coming through just those two spots. So, thank you.
And I have Will Dillmore.
Hi, Will Dillmore. 5854 North Rose Point Place in Boise. I'm actually the onsite real estate agent that was being talked about. I have 25 years of experience selling real estate in the valley here, just in Boise. I've been working with this builder and the development crew for going on about 18 years. I've been working these onsite communities that have been referenced here for the last four years. Solterra being one of them. That was a community very, very similar to this, same products, same demographics, immediately adjacent to Packard Estates to the south of where Verado is. Same two-story product that backs up to the existing Packard Estate homes. Worked great. It's all built out. It's easily seen by everybody now that can drive through there. Solterra was a great transition from Packard Estates to Fairview Boulevard, just like Verado is from Packard Estates to the north, as well as Chamberlain, to Eustick. In regards to parking, so again, we've been at Solterra, sold that out. We've been at Sobi, sold that out. Been at Verado now for 12 months, and have sold that portion. We're not having any issues. No homeowners' complaints about parking. Again, you've got the two-car stalls for the garage, two cars for the driveway. The, there's literally been no issues for parking, emergency vehicle access, in and out. I've heard a number of comments about the amount of traffic that Verado brings into, and maybe through the surrounding communities. We actually take more traffic through Verado out to Eustick from Packard and Chamberlain than we put back through their traffic. We've been actually trying to figure out how to slow that traffic down from surrounding neighborhoods actually coming through Verado. So, it's, it's nice to have multiple ingress egresses, like City of Meridian does, and so it divert, you know, disperses traffic. But we get actually more traffic through Verado than we actually put through those communities, and that's just from daily experience being onsite. Demographic-wise, this product, we've got mid-20s all the way to 80-plus for demographics. Single-level and the two stories. We have the singles, we've got divorced parents, we've got the moms, the dads that are retired that want to be closer to family now. So, in terms of the demographics and what this product is offering, has been awesome. In terms of demand, Solterra was expected to be a 36-month project, sold out in 24 months. Sobi was expected to be an 18-month project, sold out in less than 12 months. The first phase, first two phases of Verado was expected to be 24. It's now 18 on that, so.
Thank you.
Whatever it's worth.
Thank you.
Nobody else, Madam Chair?
Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to come forward and speak? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Tekla Simpson, 1918 East Camay Drive. I think this is an example of, just because you can build this many houses in one area, doesn't mean you should. Especially considering, I've seen what this density looks like right next to me. I'm here to tell you, there's absolutely no personality to these houses. When you can't even have eaves that go all the way back on a house to make it look decent? I have a real problem with it. We live in a community where we send Costco back to redesign itself, yet we're handed houses that look like this. And I would just like to see way more personality, at least make them look unique or something. And as I said, the density is ridiculous. You drive through there, no space, none. If there was ever a fire, I actually tremble to think about how many houses would go up. So, that is where I stand. Just give these people the same consideration you did Costco. That's all I ask.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, would the applicant like to come forward?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I can be fairly fast on you. Could I put my presentation back on, please? Thank you. So, I'll quickly go through, I'll save lot size transition for last. I'll quickly go through the Finch lateral. I did need to say one more, one more item on that. Inside that circle area, I think I alluded to, it's a half acre of land. It'll still count as my open space because you have passive and active. We are trying to make it a more active park. I would still have a half-active park if we don't ditch it. But again, pipe, I mean, pipe it. Piping it certainly is going to avoid the upper right-hand corner of the chain link, and no one getting to enjoy over a half acre of real estate and a regional pathway that's really not that comfortable. The open space, I'm not going to go back into that. We have caught a tremendous amount of open space. We'd sure appreciate you just capping it at 10.2 and modifying that condition. Relocate the interior open space. I don't think I can do a better job than I've already done. I would hope that we don't have to put homes in that intersection and put lights in the windows. So, we would like to delete that condition on open space. The, allow us to landscape Locust Grove with Phase 2 is the last item. Again, I guess that's development agreement and only required by city council. So, coming back to lot size transition, you know, this is very difficult for me because of all our time, and we do a lot of neighborhood meetings. You know, it was a small group at our neighborhood meeting, probably half of what's here, super nice people, super enjoyable neighborhood meeting, talking to them before the hearing, talking to them now. I actually am conflicted because I really like them. And they're a little bit different set of neighbors than we normally run across, extremely considerate and methodical. But we don't, you know, single-level restrict homes. That's not something the city typically does. That's not something we typically do. The homes that are across from us are single-level today. I actually, 10 years ago, had a single-level house that I remodeled into two-story. There is nothing to say those won't be a two-story in two years from now. However, since I am the developer, and we get to do whatever I want to do, if we were to be successful on everything else on this screen, we would limit ourselves to single-level homes against our neighbors to the south. But that would mean, let me pipe the Finch. I'm at 10.2% instead of 11. I don't want to relocate that park. That's not good planning. And that's really the only four items we're talking about. And then we would impose, through the development agreement, to single-level. I'm not trying to be pompous and ignorant. I think that would be a great trade-off, and these are super-good neighbors, I will have to admit, and we don't get to say that every day. So, it's kind of fun to say that. So, with that, I would love any further questions. And I would definitely do the unthinkable of restriction to a single-level, which you don't see every day.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Holland.
Since the first round of questions last time was about the small dog park, I'll start with that one again. Do you, are there going to be any set hours on the dog park, since there was a concern addressed about having the dog park in the backyard of some of those folks?
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioner Holland. Actually, I just had a discussion with Blackrock Homes, and I meant to bring that up. They are the one, the driver between the sales professional you heard from, Will Dillmore, and all the interviews, and Blackrock. So, it will have time rules on it, and it actually, and they've seen it in another city, it actually has, there is a restriction on the size of dog, and it actually has a portal that will be, that we will end up building in. Because in a dog park, you have that initial gate that then goes to the second gate, it will actually have a portal of some sort that I'll end up having to build, once I understand how to do it, that will restrict the size of that dog. So, it will have times, and it will have a size restriction.
One follow-up question to that. Do you have any other comments about, I'm not familiar enough about how drainage ditches work when you pipe them versus unpipe them? When, if there's any flooding concerns, can you address that a little bit for us, too, of the comments that were made earlier about the worries of flooding?
No, Madam Chair, Commissioner Holland, that is, yeah, a good, good follow-up. So, our piping plans, which have actually already been through the first round of reviews, which is the NAMPA Meridian Irrigation District. So, again, first and foremost, this is the Finch lateral, which is a delivery ditch. But all laterals, over the last 40 years, when developers were able to put some drainage in, our storm drain does not go into this property. So, what we have done is, we have taken a previous farm that used to drain, when it rained, all of its property into the drain ditch, to now, maybe the regional pathway could fight its, if it got rained on, would fight a little bit of water in there. But the entire, basically now, 36 acres that used to go into that ditch will no longer go in that ditch. So, we have nothing but minimized it. But the engineers, not only my engineer that stamps the plans, but the engineers, and it's actually a separate consulting firm that NAMPA Meridian Irrigation District lets me pay for them to review the plans, assures that that doesn't occur. So, there's a zero issue.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
I'm excited. Thank you.
Make it a motion to close the public hearing?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Wilson.
I move to close the public hearing on H-2018-0085.
Second.
Second.
It has been moved in second to close the public hearing for Verado West, H-2018-0085. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Motion carries. Would like to start?
I can start with one quick comment. I, I'm not opposed to piping the Finch drainage. I'll just say that. I think that's actually, would make a better space there in that corner. So, that's where I stand on that issue. That's all I wanted to say right now.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question of staff?
Yes.
On their request for site-specific addition, item 1.1.6, where they ask for the minimum of 10.2%, do we have a legal obligation that they have to be at 11% with code?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Commissioner Holland, no. The minimum code requirement is 10%.
Thank you.
And I would like to just clarify on the issue of the south slough. The Public Works Department did state that that is considered to be a natural waterway, and as such, it is required to be open and not be piped. There is no provision for a waiver of that requirement. Further, city code does, in regard to fencing, city code states that fencing along all natural waterways, such as that, shall not prevent access to the waterway in limited circumstances and in the interest of public safety. Larger open water systems may require fencing as determined by city council director and/or the public works director.
So, that has to be left open and fenced?
Has to be left open, yes. It is not necessarily, as stated by the applicant, required to be fenced with a chain-link fence. So, it is, it is, again, it states fencing along natural waterways shall not prevent access to the waterway. So, in limited circumstances, if we're worried about public safety, we could require fencing, but it could be wrought iron or, you know, some other type of fencing like that.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Wilson.
I guess we're just going to kind of tick this off. I mean, I think when you're dealing with Camay, I mean, I like the idea. I think single-level, I think that that's reasonable. For me, that's kind of a minimum, I think. I think we looked, we heard from the residents, I think we've kind of gone through that. So, that would be something I'd, if we were going to approve, I'd want to see that. And also, just, I mean, we don't have any choice, but I think I prefer not piping it. I mean, you know, it's the character of the community. I live in an area, you know, some of these neighborhoods have these irrigation and natural running ditches. I think it's something unique to Idaho and to Meridian, and kind of our irrigated agriculture heritage. And so, I think that, I like that there, whether it's fenced or not. I think it's up for discussion.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Castanelli.
I definitely agree with Commissioner Wilson as far as the single-level homes. Sounds like the developer was okay with that if they got everything else. Something else, but I don't know that that's going to happen with that ditch. One thing that I looked up, because I didn't, I didn't hear it when we went through the report, is ACHD, their traffic studies are showing 1,246 trips per day through this. Is that, is that accurate? Is that the entire development or just Verado West? Do you know, Sonia?
Chairman.
What I saw in the application was 1,246.
Commissioner, I don't have the report in front of me, so.
Okay, that's what I pulled up on there.
I believe that report is just for this development.
Okay, not in its entirety. That is a lot to funnel out through, I mean, you split that up, 600 out, you know, going out to Locust Grove through the one neighborhood, another 600 going out to Eustick through the other. That's a, that's a lot without having another access. And so, I guess the question would be, that's something I wanted to bring up. And I asked you about it, access to Eustick, the subdivision, I don't know the name of it, to the north, has an access there. Obviously, you wouldn't want to have one directly opposite, but what is the limitation going out to Eustick? Can there not be another?
Chairman, Commissioner, just to go backwards on your question initially, the applicant did confirm that the ACHD report, that was for the, traffic count was for the overall Verado development. So, the Verado to the east, it's not part of this application. He's stating that was included in that. I don't have it in front of me, but that's what he said.
So, that number is all through phases? One, two, three, and west, or whatever?
Yes, yeah.
That makes sense. I mean, if you have 130 homesides, there's two cars, each 260 cars, that'd be four trips a day per car at 1,246, so.
And I'll just, all it says was traffic findings, this development is estimated to generate 1,246 additional vehicle trips per day, 132 additional vehicle trips per hour in the PM peak. 132 additional vehicle trips per hour in the PM peak. So it, I was just reading that part.
So that's a traffic study from the original Verado or is?
It just, it says, on the ACHD report, it says Verado, it says MPP 18022. No, it's this file number, Verado West.
Okay.
It does not say the entire thing. So they're showing 1,246 just for this. It does seem high.
It does seem high.
Very high.
Yeah, that seems very high.
I would like to get clarification on that, I guess.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I would let you know that ACHD did reach out to staff and asked us about another access point to either Locust Grove or Eustick Road. I communicated back to Austin Miller at ACHD and told him that the city ordinance did not justify or prohibited access to those particular roadways. If you look at the traffic study, that was proven, I don't think the applicant didn't have to submit a full traffic study. It was an abbreviated traffic study to analyze those two stuff streets that are to this particular property. So as they did that, they had to analyze existing approaches from Locust Grove and Eustick and see how that would disperse through the development. So everything that's, the way the roads are currently designed is below capacity based on what I'm hearing from the applicant. So again, the abbreviated traffic study showed that having no access to those roads could still funnel the traffic through the surrounding developments and include the additional trips created by this particular development. So don't get caught up on that too much. But staff was, my recommendation or my response back to ACHD is that we did not support access to either one of those roadways as part of this development. And that's something that we communicated to the applicant at the pre-application meeting as well.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but the development to the north in Summerfield was built in the 90s and Eustick was just a two-lane road at that time. So that's likely why, that was not an arterial, which is why they allowed access off of it, so.
Yeah, just for further clarification on that too, is if another, based on my communications with Austin at ACHD, where they wanted the approach to go did not meet offsets for ACHD's policies, so they would have to grant a waiver to allow one of those access points. And I don't think that's a wise decision in this particular case. I think we stand with the way it is now and have the pet connections out to those arterial roadways and let the local streets funnel out the traffic through the surrounding neighborhoods.
Commissioner Holland, do you have a question?
I can jump in, Madam Chair. You know, going through some of the positive and some of the challenges, I really appreciate that the applicant has added some amenities that may not be traditional in other neighborhoods. I hate doing yard work and I think it's always a nice feature when they cover some of the maintenance of yard work. And I think that that was mentioned by the applicant, that that might be something as part of this facility as one of the amenities. I appreciate the large park that's in there. And when you look at the list of conditions that the applicant requested, I don't have a huge concern with leaving that park where it is, on that first block on the right side, for the suggestion that he made when you're driving into the neighborhood. There's a lot of headlights coming in there. I think that does help deflect some of it. It's not really necessarily a park for hanging out as much as it is a park for kind of deflecting some of that extra traffic impact. So I'm okay with that condition. There's a lot of things to look at here. I think, looking at the challenges that all the neighbors have come forward and expressed, I would much rather see single-level homes on that southern portion as it connects to that neighborhood nearby. I just think it's tough to put two-story homes right in the backyard of people, especially when you've got more than one neighbor sharing your fence line. Just a few more comments to add, so.
Can staff pull up those conditions again? I know, or on the developer's presentation? I think we've gotten through all of them in the comments, and I'm just making sure.
So I have a question regarding the open space percentages. The applicant had said that there's a total open space percentage of 13.5. That's including the first two phases. We can't really consider those because we don't know if the DA agreement's going to include the Verado West. Is that right? That's the assumption that the DA agreement is going to cover all three? If we look at, if we, if we look at common area open space for all of them, can we do that? Is that a consideration we can make? Do you understand my question?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand your question.
Okay.
They are requesting to amend the development agreement to include it all in one agreement.
But that's City Council's decision and we don't know what their decision will be?
Yes, it's their decision. The conditions of approval in this staff report are only for this development.
Yeah, okay.
Madam Chair, question for staff.
Casinelli.
Sonia, when you were looking at the condition to relocate the park, were you looking at it, I brought this up in my statement to the applicant, were you looking, you're looking at it from this standpoint of this division, this section only, the Verado West, to where it's all on one side? Were you looking at it, is that how you're seeing it? Or are you looking at it as the entire development?
Chairman Commissioners, either way, there's nothing on the west end of the development area. So you've got your area over here to the east, you've got this area. There's just nothing over in this area.
To be devil's advocate on that too, there's nothing on the southeast either.
Certainly up to the commission.
On that note though, these lots look, appear from the drawing to probably be larger and probably have larger backyards. Whereas when you have the density, they just don't have that space within their own properties. So.
Madam Chair, one other comment is if you count the number of houses that you'd have to walk, not that that's a good scale of measurement, but in the south one, it's about 11 houses to get from the west end of the development over to where the park is, if you're looking on that road.
Checking about from the houses that back up to Locust Grove?
Yeah.
Sonia, can you clarify for us the requirement to have the arterial landscape buffer all completed in the first phase? Is that something we need to consider or is that just part of the DA agreement?
Madam Chair, Commission, that's something that the mayor and council is typically liked with the first phase of development, but that's something that you can certainly make a recommendation on.
Okay.
If you disagree with the provision.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Casinelli.
Something I'm just seeing here that I guess didn't stand out to me. Sonia, on the perimeter of this, both along Locust Grove and Orchard, there's a setback there. But there's not in the first phase, further to the east and next to that other parcel. Do you see what I'm looking at there?
Are you looking at the?
What is?
This area here?
Yeah, well, I'm looking at all, the perimeter of Verado West, along Locust Grove and Eustick. There's a landscape buffer, but then what's out beyond that?
I'm not sure what you're referencing. This was kind of copy and pasted in here. So I'm not sure if that's what you're looking at, the difference between the two or?
Oh, now, yeah, when you say it, that's actually going, it's kind of overlapping.
It is, yeah.
It's sticking out into Eustick, okay. All right. It looked like there was, it looked like there was additional, an additional buffer from that image.
Looks a little better there, I think. Looks a little more the same.
Yeah.
I believe it's the same buffer, either way you look at it.
Now, that's a little, a little more clear. Madam Chair.
Commissioner Casinelli.
I, this one, Steph, there's a few things that concern me on this. I would like to get clarification from ACHD. I don't, and I don't know. I'm kind of leaning towards maybe we, I hate continuing things because I hate having them come back. But I'm thinking that maybe continuing this to see single-level going in on the backside for a better transition to, I believe it's Kame Street there. I'd like clarification from ACHD on the traffic count. Is that the entire Verado project or just, or just this one? And maybe seeing an alternative plan to get some, to get some of that open space moved to the, moved to the western edge. I don't know. Anybody else?
I think, Madam Chair, I think like Commissioner Holland, I'm fine with the way it is. So I'm open to recommending approval with the single family. I mean, I think we've gotten to a kind of a place where, I mean, I agree. We had someone talk about, I guess, the Costco test. You know, really, I think we can be, we can scrutinize these a little more carefully. I mean, the demand's there, we're growing like gangbusters. We can scrutinize these and I really do think we've scrutinized these and we've really whittled down kind of where we're at. And we've listened to the residents and, you know, I think the real sticking point was the single, that those single-level homes. I think there's some heartburn about the density. And obviously, you're alluding to the traffic. But I just don't see the, you know, the necessity for, you know, getting that ACHD report. I think we have the information we have now and I don't think our decision's radically going to change. We're just going to have a little more information because I think, I think the ACHD report's going to come under what we're talking about and we're going to be, we're going to approve it in two weeks or four weeks. So I think we, I think we're at a decision and I'm ready to make a motion.
I'm curious, my commissioner's thoughts on the three-foot setbacks and the no-eaves on the sides of the homes? You know, I, we all came on the commission at the same time, except for Greg. And I don't know if you were here when the original Verado was approved, but, you know, that was, it's in front of us now, that was their decision. You know, we may decide differently and I think that's okay, that's why we're here. And so I'm just, you know, curious. It's, I can understand how the thought would be, well, it was approved once, why would we not do it again? But, you know, the cities, we're seeing.
Higher scrutiny, Costco test.
So, does anybody have any specific thoughts to share on that?
I'll weigh in on that, I guess. I don't like it. But I get what they're trying to do. They're trying to build a project that's priced in there. I think they could go a higher price and sell them in there too because you look around and, you know, all around the area and in the neighboring subdivisions and the homes are, you know, I think they can get it. I mean, the end of the day, it comes down to, you know, can they sell the project and make money on it? I mean, that's what it's about. But I also get that they're trying to make a project that's a little bit more affordable. Everything is, you know, as we know, I mean, you know, prices are going, you know, through the roof. They're going, they're going nuts. So I do like the fact, I'm never crazy about the density. I am not a high-density guy. I'm not wild about it. But they're trying to make a, I get that they're trying to make a project that's going to fit in that price point. I don't like the no-eaves, I don't. But to get that to fit and make, to make kind of a price point, I, I get it. I'm okay with it. I'm okay with the three-foot setbacks to put that in there. That's not, you know, my biggest concern, I guess, is that, is, I read it, ACHD is saying 1,246 in this, you know, for 132 homes. I don't know if that number's right, but I would like to get clarification on it. And I definitely, definitely want to see the single level. If they're going with that lot count, if that lot count's going to stay the same with that transition. Anyway, that's my comments on the eaves.
Madam Chair, I think we all agree that the biggest concern with some of the setbacks in having the three feet was with having the two-story on that south side. If you make all those single-story, I have less of a concern of the three-foot because you've got a little bit more visual angle for some of those residents that are sharing that fence line. I can see both sides of it and it's tough because I like the look of eaves a lot better. I think it helps make the houses look a little more diverse, it helps make them look a little more complete. But at the same time, I also appreciate that the developers worked to try and create a product that's not just a multifamily project. You know, when you're trying to figure out how to put some higher density in there and give a diversity of product, it's not a huge area and they have a mix of single and two-story instead of having some of those fourplexes or eightplexes in there. I guess I'm not set one way or another on it. I see both sides of it. I'd prefer to probably see the eaves, but I don't think I would deny it not having the eaves.
I think if Bill is okay with eaves and setback, we better make a motion before he changes his mind.
But I'm not okay with the traffic count. So Commissioner Casinelli, I found an ACHD staff report and you are correct. It does say that they anticipate this development generating 1,246 trips. So I just wanted to provide that clarification.
I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's right or wrong. It seems really high.
It's remarkable because everyone's critical of ACHD the other way and now they're like overcompensating, it seems like. I mean, I don't get the methodology there at all.
Well, they all use the same trip generation manual. So hopefully, they're all working off the same page when they're analyzing these trips and traffic through these developments.
Okay, now you know the.
He wants to make a motion.
I think, I might need a little help. After considering all staff, applicant, and public testimony, I move to recommend approval to City Council, a file number H-2018-0085, as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of September 20th, 2018, with the following modification, well, no. See, I mean, the single, is the single level, that's part of the conditions. That's part of the conditions in the look here. So I guess.
Well, it's lot size.
Lot size.
It's not the house.
The lot size transition.
Can we condition it for single level?
I'm sorry.
Nope, you're fine.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, yes, you can. Part of that development agreement, you could add that as a provision to do that and lose lots. But I think for staff's clarification, we want to know, when you say single level, do you mean more of the attached product, like they show along the Eustick, Locust Grove buffer? I think that's what the applicant is understanding when you say single story or single level. So they will lose lots, essentially.
Single level attached.
Thank you.
That's 1-1-1C.
And I guess, is that something you want in the development agreement as well?
Having it attached?
Provision.
Having it attached or having it single level or both?
Both. That condition.
As long as it's single level, probably, right? You're making a motion.
Yeah.
Single level in the development agreement.
Thank you.
I think it'd be either.
Then I think we keep everything as is.
About keeping that lateral open?
I think, yeah, and the open space.
As Sonia said, there's not a, we don't have a choice on that.
Yeah. I mean, we already dealt with the lateral, we already dealt. It's the only modification I see, and the park.
Modification for the single lot, did we talk about?
Open space, we have to keep it there.
And then the interior open park is the other one.
Yes, and then, delete recommendation regarding the interior park.
And we also have the arterial landscape buffer in first phase.
I thought we were going to keep that.
That's not us, it's in the development agreement.
Yeah, that's not us.
What about the...
We can make a recommendation regarding the landscape. We can make a recommendation to City Council. If somebody, yeah, if you want to include that in your motion, you can make a recommendation.
Include it in my motion.
And what about the relocating of the open space?
I already did that.
You did.
You're making, to be clear, you're making a motion to delete that recommendation?
I am, yeah.
Can I just summarize your motion to make sure I understand it?
Yes.
You're making a motion to approve the application to City Council with the condition that they strike item 1.1.1C for lot size transition and change it to say that they are required to be single level?
Yes.
And that they strike the condition about relocating the interior open space, but everything else remains the same as the staff report?
Yes.
I'll second it.
It has been moved and seconded. Verrato West, H-2018-0085. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay, only because of ACHD.
Motion's denied.
Shh, oh, I, Madam Chair.
Mr. Casinelli.
May I ask your concern?
My concern is relocating the interior open space. I would like to see that relocated.
Madam Chair, would you prefer to look at a continuance to consider the, see if we could get more information about parking or relocating the park? Or do you think there's going to be significant enough changes that we're going to be able to make a decision with that information in the future?
I really don't think we need a continuance. I think we can get this figured out this evening.
Madam Chair.
I'm not going to, or Madam Chair, I mean, I'm not that hung up on, I mean, I don't know about you, I just thought it was the more streamlined option, and I didn't know there was such adamant opposition to it.
Can I get clarification from staff? So if this specific site-specific condition, item 1.1.6, requires 11% open space, and we say that we're agreeing with the applicant that they only want 10.2, we need to show that as a modification to the conditions?
Chairman, Commissioners correct, yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Casinelli.
Sonya, I have another, I have a question regarding the lateral. Whose call is that, that it has to?
Well, it's clearly depicted on our maps as the south slough, and the Public Works has confirmed that it is the south slough. In our comprehensive plan, it is a protected natural waterway.
Okay. Is there any, is there anybody that can make that change? Obviously, we can't here, but is there somebody else that can make that change that they can go to? The answer's no.
Is the applicant permitted to apply for comp plan amendment for that? Okay. Seems no. Right. Okay.
Try to help you on that one.
I just want to be very clear.
I think, I mean, I think we've narrowed it down to one thing. I think someone can make a motion, and since it was so painful for me to do it, I don't know, someone down there might.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Holland.
My only other concern, just thinking back, the comment that he made about headlights going into the neighborhood, is that not a concern for anyone, the way that that comes in?
So, for me, it's not. I'm in real estate, and I see this happen frequently, and I think that the, it's two lots, and the individuals who are buying that lot know that that's going to be an element. So I, to me, it's the enjoyment of the entire neighborhood using a common area versus two homeowners. So that's my thought on it.
Sonya, on that note, can you pull up the photos of the houses? I think some of these, if they were, if it were a two-story there, it's going to be, the headlights are going to be hitting the garage, for the most part, when you look at that. They're not going to be going in the living room window. And I think in every subdivision, there's a street configuration somewhere where houses are getting it. I know in my neighborhood, you know, at the end of every, at every corner, there's a house.
In every subdivision. So to add to that, you know, these are, with the three-foot setbacks and the large homes relative to the lot size, they really don't have a lot of usable space. And so I think if you, if we weren't discussing so much density with detached, single-family homes, well, even with attached, you know, I maybe wouldn't be stuck on that location, but I just think, you just don't have a lot of usable space on the lots themselves with, I mean, the small setbacks. I really think moving the green space to the west side is important in this particular situation.
Sure.
I understand why you're asking, though, because we want to incentivize, I get, I don't know if that's the right word, but the applicant has stated that his preference would be to get his, the requests he has made to the changes in the conditions in order to create the single-level homes in the back, but...
Madam Chair, I'm going to throw out a motion, see what happens here. I'm going to, I move to continue file number H-2018-0085. Bill, what's the fourth looking like?
Do you need a reason?
I'll get there. I was looking at the date first.
I'm curious.
That's why I went too far.
As far as hearing applications?
As far, yeah.
Yeah, it's not terrible.
It's not terrible?
No.
Um...
But I would caution, if you're going to go the continuance and you get approval on that motion, be very specific as to what you want to see them bring back and just discuss those items at that hearing, not entire development again. So if you want to continue this to look at relocation of open space, clarification on ACHD, whether or not they want access to Eustick, for example, if that's something you think you want to see included as part of the development, that's certainly something you can do, or piping of the ditch, I mean, whatever it is, just be very specific as to what items you want to address at that next hearing.
Okay.
And Commissioner, that the public hearing would be reopened, so that it could be continued for the purpose of hearing whatever the particular issue conditions are that you want addressed.
Can you repeat that?
Yeah, that you would just reopen the public hearing, because it's been closed. So you're going to be continuing it for the purpose of whatever you want them to work on and bring back differently.
Do we do that after I make the motion?
You can, or you can do it in the motion. You could do it afterwards.
To reopen it, to just get feedback from the applicant?
Yeah. It has to be reopened in order for it to come back for the additional items. Is that correct? That's what I believe is the correct process. Go ahead with your motion. We'll address the reopening.
We'll address that one. All right. I move to continue file number H-2018-0085 to the hearing date of October 4th for the following reasons. I want to, I want the applicant to come back with a revision of moving the green space to the west, and also showing single-level homes along the, adding that to the DA to have single-level homes along the south side. And I would also like to add in there that I want verification from ACHD on the traffic count. So if we could go back to them and just ask that, so that City Council is clear when it goes to them. Anything else? That's my motion.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, just clarification on that. I know you're asking for clarification from ACHD. They've given us a staff report. They've verified that number for you. They haven't required another access to any of the arterial roadways. They've concluded that this can function within their acceptable levels of service. I guess, is your purpose for getting further clarification, is that to support an access to a Eustick road, or, I'm trying to understand what the concern is from the commission on that particular item.
It seems like a really high number for 132 homes.
Well, that's not a bad thing. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but if we don't realistically think that number's that high, then do we really need them to, I mean, do we really need them to comment on it? We're already sitting here thinking that's too high, so the concern really is if it's too low.
Madam Chair, members, I can tell you that they had concerns that there wasn't another access out. Their traffic engineers didn't ask them to analyze that a little bit more, but again, my comments back to them were, our code supports access from local roads and not burdening the arterial roadways any further, so it's just some, sharing with you the conversation that I had with ACHD staff member, I never talked to their traffic engineers.
Okay. Can I ask, as far as the single-level homes, are you concerned that they will be different from what is on Eustick? Are you concerned the lot, the lot sizes are going to be smaller or larger, or...
I just want to make sure that they're going to come back, I guess I just want to make sure that that's going to be part of it, that they're going to come back and with single-family homes along the southern border.
But do we need to physically see something that shows they're going to do that, or are you looking for them to make adjustments to their visuals so that we can see it, or are you just wanting confirmation?
I just want confirmation, I just want some, I guess we don't need to see, you know, we don't need to see renderings, I guess, that needs to be added into the agreement, I guess, that it's going to be single-family on the southern border, so that somehow, you know, as they're building, we don't get two stories in there.
Madam Chair, excuse me, if that's the direction you're going, and you just want to make sure that Council gets that, you can certainly make the recommendation that the applicant revise the plans and submit revised plans to the city 10 days prior to the council hearing. If that's your purpose. If you want to see it personally, then...
Well, I guess if, the point of, the biggest point of continuing it is to, is to take a look at moving that green, moving the park and seeing that.
Madam Chair.
But I'm just, I would add in the, you know, that they make the change to the single level.
Commissioner Casinelli, I think if we ask them to come back with a revised plan of how that park would look, it's going to look fairly similar with this lot switched with another lot, one of those squares in the middle. I don't think they're going to come back with anything much different than that, would be my assumption, so...
I also agree that I'd like to see it moved, but I am not, I mean, I don't want, I would prefer not to see it moved to the set of homes directly to the west, but I'm not concerned if they, you know, as long as it's in the western half, where they choose to put it, I'm not really that concerned about. I mean, I think it'll, I trust that it will go in a location that will service everyone. It doesn't sound like they would put it on the south side, so, and probably not on the west, because those lots are larger. My guess is, you know, if we make that request, they're going to try to fit it into the two blocks of homes on the west side. Would that be satisfactory, if it was roughly the same size and fit into one of those two blocks of homes?
Then I guess I could totally redo the motion and just get an approval with that. In that case, can you put back up that list of...
Greg, do you want to fly the motion again, Greg?
Do you want to officially rescind your other motion?
Yes, I will rescind my motion to continue, since there was no second anyway.
I'd be happy to take a stab at making the motion if you'd like. After considering all staff applicant and public testimony, I move to recommend approval to City Council file number H-2018-0085 as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of September 20th, 2018, with the following modifications, that we would strike this site-specific condition, item 1.1.1C about lot size transition, and make a note that we would ask the applicant to have a single-level home on the southern border of the development, and that we would, before the applicant brings this forward to City Council, that they would relocate the interior open space as requested by staff and reflect that in their visuals before the City Council meeting.
Second. That's a good, that's a good motion.
We did not modify the requirement for the 11% open space? Is that something you intend to do?
Can we have discussion before I put that in the motion?
I think so. But you're going to want...
It was my understanding from other commissioners that that was something that we didn't want to include in the motion originally, to reduce the minimum to the 10.2%.
So leave it at the 11? Okay.
I can ask a question to staff on that. Why, what was your thinking in going from 10.2 to 11?
Chairman Commissioners, the number that was calculated on was basically based on the removal of these two lots. It was an approximate area.
Okay.
It was just to create a more thorough, open space and, you know, it was a little larger, since the lots are so small.
So staff wanted essentially four lots of open space versus two?
I second it, I think we're good.
Moved and seconded at this point.
It's been moved and seconded to approve file 2018-0089 with stated modifications. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries.
You were going to make the motion.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Wilson.
I move that we end this evening's hearing.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing for September 20th, 2018. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I can agree on that.